It's 12:33. The voice from on high has spoken. Welcome, everybody, to our Provo Municipal Council work session on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. It is 12:33 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are being held in hybrid fashion. That is, members of the public can view council meetings on YouTube or Facebook, or they may attend in person. I will remind everybody to mute your microphone when not speaking. And I'll state the names of the council members who are here. I am George Handley. I'm joined by Counselor Shipley, Counselor Ellsworth, and Counselor Whipple. Is Counselor McKay joining us on Zoom? He will be joining us on Zoom later, and we expect Counselor Hoban and Fillmore to be here shortly. Isaac Paxman, could I ask you to offer an opening prayer?
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful to be here today. We're thankful for this community, for life, for each person here, for the chance to try and serve and help make this community as good as it can be. We ask that help with that, and we ask that that will be with each of us throughout this day and in all the service that is rendered on behalf of this city. We pray for our police officers, our firefighters and others on the front lines and out in the community today. Please be with them and protect them. And we ask all these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Should mention, I'm also joined on the stand by Brian Jones, our city attorney, Justin Harrison, our executive director, Isaac Paxman, our deputy. Here offered that prayer. We have had a request for closed session. Brian Jones, do you want to explain? And I'll just explain to the public, we don't, we normally have our closed sessions later in the afternoon, but for a variety of reasons, we felt like we needed to do it early, so we're going to do it now and then return back here in a little bit.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Handley. As the council swear, state code allows for closed meetings for some selected topics. Principally, in our context, those that are allowed are strategy sessions regarding land transactions or litigation and discussions regarding character incompetence of individuals. There's been a couple of topics that have been brought forward that do fall under those categories, so it would be appropriate to for a motion to close the meeting at this time.
Okay, I will look for that motion.
I'll move to close the meeting.
Counselor Shipley.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Ellsworth. I'll call for a vote. I will vote yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yep.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
And we will excuse Counselors McKay, Hoban, and Fillmore, so the vote is unanimous. We'll reconvene in the pre-function area for the closed meeting, and we'll come back here for a public meeting at approximately 1:50.
Welcome, everybody. We will reconvene this work meeting of the municipal council. I will note that in the course of the last hour or so, we have been joined by all council members. So Counselor Fillmore and Counselor Hoban are here in person. And Counselor McKay is joining us online. So we're all fully present, and Mayor Kafusi and Wayne Parker are in the stand with us as well. So we'll start with the approval of minutes. It is proposed we approve the minutes from September 20th, 2022 work meeting, October 4th, 2022 work meeting. Are there any objections or requested changes? Seeing no objection, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. And we'll begin with item number one, which is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 8.1 acres of real property generally located at 652 South Lakeview Parkway from Public Facilities PF and Ag... Oh, wait, hold on a second. We never... Oh, no, sorry, this is work meeting. Never mind. I was like, we didn't have for public comment, but that's in the evening. Sorry, Aaron. Public Facilities and Agricultural A1.5 to Airport Industrial A1. Or AI. That's AI, not A1. Yes. Provo Bay Neighborhood and Aaron Ardmore Planner will be our presenter.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the time. So this is a project that the applicant has been working on since January with staff on this property, just off of Lakeview Parkway. If you're familiar with the Kenny Seating Construction Yard, it's just across the cul-de-sac from that. So this property has been zoned, Public Facilities and Agriculture for some time. The general plan calls for this to go towards Airport Industrial, and that is the request. And this actually went through, the zone change went through with a project plan rather than concept plan on this one, and the planning commission approved the project plan conditional to the zone change being approved. So I'll have more on this tonight, but if you have any questions that I can prepare for this evening, I can take those now.
Okay, any questions that you think would be helpful for Aaron to answer or information you'd like him to find before tonight? Fillmore?
Aaron, I just wanted to ask you, is there any opposition to this that you're aware of?
The only comment was from a neighbor to the west of the property applying commission, but at that meeting and since that meeting, the applicant has talked to him and worked out all of his concerns, I believe. So I think we're good on public concern. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
We'll return to that this evening. Go to item number two. An ordinance amending Provo City Code Title 14 for all references of the sign code. Evan Weaver Planner will be our presenter.
Hi. All right, so all this is primarily is we're shifting any reference of the sign code to all to be housed within Chapter 14.38. That chapter houses majority of our signs, but as you can see on the screen, all of these zones also have any have language discussing signs. So we're just shifting it all into this chapter primarily, but there are a few changes happening. One of them, all this is doing, you can see where this should be going within the zone chapter. Again, nothing really is new here. Some changes. Sometimes with signs, it says that the planning commission should make, decide whether that's approved or not, whether that's appropriate. We're shifting that to the issuance of a building permit should be housed within the building division, and it would not go to planning commission. Another change here. This should be applicable to the zones on the screen. If a sign is going to be a historic sign, then then it should go to landmarks for approval rather than going to planning commission. And the last change here is removing this part from the MP zone. I don't, it's discussing saying that planning commissions should name what the streets in this, an immobile, a manufactured home park zone. We don't think that's appropriate. We think that should be done administratively. Are there any questions for staff?
Questions for Mr. Weaver?
This does include shifting.
Counselor Ellsworth has a question. Yeah.
Just to clarify, we're just moving a couple of these items to administrative processes.
Correct.
You were going to say something?
Yeah, this includes with the CMU zone that will have codified or language for signs. So what happened a few weeks ago won't happen again.
Thank you. All right, we will also return to that then for this evening. Like, there are any questions? Thanks. Okay, we'll go to item number three. An ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding required parking stall widths next to walls or columns. Citywide application. Mr. Weaver, you're up again.
Right. This is what we're looking at. We're looking at our city code and seeing an opportunity to have to make things right. I've been in a lot of parking garages. We have a lot in the city. We have a lot of development happening, and we thought, is our code right? Is it not? What kind of things can we do to make it right? So I took my car and parked it in all types of positions in parking garages to see, is this work? We found that if we adjusted the column, if it just, if you put the columns in a certain place, ultimately, all you want to do is be able to access your car, be able to pull in and pull out safely and open your doors. If you have the columns in a certain spot, then we can reduce the width of a parking stall in it, and so therefore, you won't have to have as big of a parking garage if they do it as our guidance says here. There were a few photos, too. One thing we're fixing to not have any instructions. Photo on the left, this is a new building that was just constructed. That is a parking stall. They put a fan there. If a parking car there, I extend out, and that has a parking row on the right side, and so it may be hard to back out. On the picture on the right, I had to park the Jeep to the far right. Clearly, if there's a car on the right side, it'd be hard to open because of the walls that were having, were seemed to have another foot there for some more space for that reason. On the far left, we do have a hammerhead for a car to back out. So if they were parked next to that, they do have to have space to get out. This is a poor example that we have. And then on the right, this is showing again kind of that if you had two cars there, it could be difficult and accessing that room within this garage. On the left, this is in our old city center, that column is within six feet rather than four feet, and that SUV on the right cannot open their car door for the backseat. On the right side, this column is placed within four feet of the parking stall, and this is what a lot of garages are already doing, and this is just an example of how they do it right. Are there any questions?
No, it looks like there aren't any questions. Oh, Counselor Ellsworth, there is.
Are there any specifications in the code either existing or proposed that would create a safer environment in parking garages? Like, they're generally creepy space, and I mean, like, there's really terrible stories about parking garages in Provo, but is there any accommodations or any requirements in the code that would promote public safety, visibility, anything like that?
I know we talk about lighting, parking lighting.
It could be lighting. It could be like more ingress egress, more directions to like stairs, more stairs, more like some of the parking garages that have open spaces, you know what I mean?
This is the only section of code that we talk about subgreater parking structures, specifically on the design. This is the only section. So we don't, for that exact question, no.
Okay. I think going forward, we should consider public safety in parking garages, all parking garages. There are some best practices that could be in it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Don't go away because we need you again. Item number four, an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding the mixed use MU and neighborhood mixed use NMU zones. It's also a citywide application.
So you're probably surprised to see this. I was too. All this is, is just an error in our part when we amended, enacted the zones a few weeks ago. We just missed a couple of sections of code being added into that ordinance. All this is rectified by that. The only sections that were not included was the landscaping, design standards, and the signage, not the main signage, but the amendment to include include the zones in prohibiting electronic signs. That's all this is. No changes on what was presented back then.
All right. Any questions about this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Weaver. We'll go on then to item number five. A presentation regarding the Utah Municipal Power Agency Proposed Integrated Resource Plan. Travis Ball, Provo Power Director, will be our presenter. Welcome, Mr. Ball. Good to have you here.
Thank you, council. Appreciate this opportunity in administration. This is an interesting plan that I'm going to present today. For one, you're probably wondering what my ask is. My ask is for the council and for the citizens of Provo to read through the integrated resource plan and give us feedback. Because the great thing about municipal power is that we get to receive feedback from the residents, and they really drive the direction of where we go with what we do. And particularly in the way of generation, I don't know of any other one line item in the city's budget that's $50 million annually, and this one line item is worth about $50 million. And so since you guys are the Public Service Commission for the city, this affects you and affects the budget and affects the citizens of Provo. So I'd just like to give a overview of what the integrated resource plan is, and then encourage the citizens of Provo and everybody on the council to read through it, and then give UMPA or myself feedback of what we can do to to be prepared for the next 20 years when it comes to power resources. Let's see, how do I move this forward? There we go. Maybe. Okay, just go to the next slide. Maybe I can do it. The integrated resource plan is really a plan looking for the future of what we need to make sure that we have reliable power. So we look at system requirements. And as you know, and I don't know if the public knows, but UMPA is a joint action agency that six cities are part of, Provo being about 60% of that organization, but there's also MiFID, Levan, Spanish Fork, Mantai, and Salem. So we all get together and we look at resources and we try to buy in an economic way and a reliable way. So we look at economics. We look at the capacity, the resources that we own and what we will need to get into the future. And then finally, how do we do that in an environmentally sustainable way? One thing that I would say is Provo has been very good at moving UMPA, moving the Power Department in a more sustainable generation, and it's, we really, it's come from a feedback from the Sustainability Committee of Provo and George and some of the council members that have have a vision of what they want to see in the future. Let me go to the next one. It was first given to the Board, UMPA, last month. They approved it to go to the public for comment. It's out for public comment for the rest of October. Once we get all those comments back, it'll be put into the plan and adjustments made, and we hope to get the final version of the IRP out and the first of December. So all the comments and everything will be available on November 30th as the Board accepts those. Next one. This is a slide just showing what UMPA does. They get the input from each city, the growth. They look at the past 20 years, look to see where we're going, and then they try to make a they look at a plan going forward. Interestingly enough, it's, there's some things in the horizon that are really tough to figure out, right? What if everybody goes to all electric vehicles? What is the impact of global warming? Those things are a little hard to figure out, but we're trying to look at them. In this plan, we kind of look at back 20 years and we kind of look forward 20 years, and we make a little bit of a judgment high and low, and we try to forecast that out. That's what we, that's what UMPA has done. Next one. When we're looking at resources, there are several different kinds of resources, peaking, intermediate, base, and intermittent. And if you go through this plan, you'll see all those different resources called out on where they lie in the base and intermittent or intermediate. But whenever we go out for resource, we have to make decisions on which is the best, most economical way to make sure that the citizens of Provo have power 100% of the time. Here's a list of what is current. And so there are some resources, and it talks about in the plan when they will go offline or when they'll be decommissioned. We have two coal power plants that will be decommissioned in 2030 and 2035 to 2040, we believe. So as we've been moving over the last five to 10 years, we've been taking off coal resources. By 2040, we believe there won't be any coal resources. So those resources we have to replace, and that's kind of what the plan talks about. What are the options of replacing those coal resources? And next slide. These are some of the future power resources that we're looking at. Natural gas with SCRs, make it a clean resource, nuclear utility scale, batteries, hydrogen, they're all types of resources that we're looking at now and deciding what we're going to do in the future. Finally. Oh, there's a supply side, and then there's also a demand side, and this is another area that citizens can have a big impact. So what can we do to help citizens conserve? Also, what can we do to help the air in the valley? Some of the things we've been doing lately is replacing those small engines like lawn mowers that came from the Sustainability Committee, some of those things that we do to encourage clean air in the valley and also sustainability. But we would love feedback from the public on other ideas that they have. Next one. If you're interested in looking at this, you can go to umpa.energy and submit a comment as you read this IRP. An easy way also is to look up Provo Power on Facebook, and we've put it out to the public so that they can see that and give us comments. And that's really what we're hoping from this presentation, that we get people to read the IRP and give us comments. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ball, Counselor Ellsworth, and then Counselor Hoban?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. So Travis, you can go first.
No, I have a question.
Go.
You want me to go? Okay. Does, this is totally random. Do we have any like stranded or wasted energy or unused energy that ends up wasted in any way, or do we sell all of our excess energy that at any given point?
Energy is an interesting thing because when it's generated, it has to be used.
Right.
If it's not used when it's generated, then it's gone. So there's always additional energy that's generated. So you have to have spinning reserves, is what they call it. So if a resource goes off lines, suppose we have we have significant resources on solar now, but if you have a cloud cover come over, you'll drop megawatts of power instantaneously. So you always have to have spinning reserves in the back to pick up that load. And that's always there. We try not to do that. But I'll just say intermittent resources, they come and go. We don't have any control over that. So there are spinning resources to take to make sure that we have power to cover those.
Okay, what's our, what's our main? I don't know if I'm using the right word, main source of stranded energy. Like, what is the thing we end up not using most?
Hopefully, we don't have a lot, but it's interesting. If you have a lot of solar during the day, you have to come off of certain resources. And so recently, coal resources, coal plants will start to to come off, and that's kind of where we're, it's a cost because you have to, you can't generate coal, and it takes about eight hours to take it down and bring it back up. So I would say some of those stranded resources or things like that during the day, but it's also it, solar's taking over some of those. It's an environmental issue, right? So coal on baseload is probably one of the issues, one of the things you're talking about. Natural gas, you can bring on and off very quickly, but a hydro, coal, nuclear, those are baseload products. And if you get a lot of intermittent that goes into your baseload, then you have to come off of those baseload products. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did. I just, you hear a lot about Bitcoin and crypto mining and how they use stranded energy. So I was just curious where we're at with that as far as stranded energy, so. But we don't have to get into the whole crypto thing right now. Don't worry about it, Travis.
The one thing that is kind of disconcerting is we've had very good hydropower for the last 30, 40 years and very low cost. And with the with the drought, our hydropower, we used to get 25% from hydropower. It went down to 19% this year. And that's a big concern because we had to replace a very low cost baseload product with a higher cost energy resource.
And sorry, pardon my ignorance, where does our hydropower come from? Where do we generate that?
Most of it comes from Glen Canyon. It comes along the Colorado River. So it's called CRSP. It comes around the Colorado River Storage Project, so dams.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, this is a sidebar, but Provo Power had a terrific public event that was very well attended, and I just want to say thanks to Provo Power, Travis, and all your staff. Please give them our thanks. It was just very well attended, very exciting for kids and people of all ages to experience and learn about this essential service. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. I think it was a really good opportunity for people to find out what the Power Department does, and now it wasn't me. I'll shout out to Kat Linford, who does a great job doing that.
I had a technical question. I can't seem to find the IRP link. And you just had the address on the last slide. And I'm just, so if we go to the website, umpa.energy.
So George, we linked the report. If you go to agendas.provo.org and then access the memo for this item, there's a link in the memo to the document.
But it's concerning if you went to the UMPA website and couldn't find it either. So I'll
The way to find it on the website, it's one of the recycling banner menus. And so you have to
Wait until it comes around?
Yeah, wait till it comes around or hits.
I just see it. I see it now. Okay.
There it is.
All right.
Yeah, it took me a minute, but I found it, too.
All right, I couldn't, yeah, sorry, I missed that link, and then I thought it was the actual PowerPoint, and it wasn't the detail. One quick question I have is what do the prospects look like at this point with nuclear going forward? The sort of micro versions of it that I know you've talked about? Is that on the horizon at this?
It is on the horizons. I think there's two competing technologies. One, they're doing up in Wyoming, Rocky Mount Powers, looking at it. I think it's a Bill Gates technology. And then there's one that we were involved in, the other cities in Utah have been very heavily involved in that a small modular reactor in Idaho at the INL, the Idaho National Laboratory, and that looks like it's moving along. The issue is just what the cost is going to be. So if you've watched nuclear projects, there's always considerable overrun on the budget, and that's one thing we, as a power department, I can't bring down a whole city on a power project that would just billions of dollars. And so we're watching, we're seeing, we're encouraging our congressional delegation to hopefully get federal money to do the plants and then have the power companies pay that back through a PPA, just like they did Glen Canyon, Hoover Dam, those projects in the 80s, 70s. We think that's a better way of doing a nuclear plant, which I would believe would be a way of becoming energy independent if we really got serious about it, and it's a clean energy without global warming aspects to it.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, I just had one more comment about the way your plan is labeled on the website. So when you look at it, at the bottom, it says it's the five-year plan for 2017 to 2022. But it's actually the final draft of the 2022 to 2041. So there's
Ah, that's what's confusing me.
So that's the confusion.
Is that on the Provo City or the?
That's the UMPA Energy.
Okay, yeah, I'll let them know.
And then maybe move that 2017 to 2022 over to the archived IRPs with the 2013 to 2017. That would make it a little bit more intuitive for people to navigate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did put it on our Facebook. Hopefully, that made it easier because then you could go right to the Facebook and link to it. So thank you, Counselor Whipple.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Ball. Okay, we'll go on to item number six, which is a presentation regarding the update on the My Hometown Initiative. Dixon Holmes, Assistant CAO, and Tara Riddle, Embudsman, will be our presenters.
Greetings, Council Chair, Vice Chair, and council members, Mayor. So it was, we were just reviewing our notes. Mr. Parker made a presentation to the council back in February about the My Hometown Initiative, and today Tara, Riddle, and myself have a couple of brief updates and to tell you what we've been doing. And I believe there's a couple of videos that are queued somewhere. And hopefully, that will be for everyone's benefit, recognizing that maybe you as council members are more familiar, but as this is a work session, and there's thousands upon thousands of people watching this show, it will hopefully provide some update for them also. So I'll give a little bit of an overview, and then all the videos will do that. But we divided the My Hometown Initiative into two neighborhoods. The South Freedom and the Pioneer Park. And those are a little bit indicative of some of the areas as far as the locational names. So the area that I was assigned So the area that I was assigned to the South Freedom is basically south of the railroad tracks between along Freedom Boulevard, the residential side, and then the neighborhood, including just north of the Provo Town Center Mall. So that's the neighborhood that I'm working with. And Tara can describe the Pioneer Neighborhood. But in it's it's kind of a tale of two cities or two neighborhoods. In in the one that I'm working in, in South Franklin or South Freedom. And that's the other challenge too. There's a South Franklin area, but the the one that we call ours, my hometown is South Freedom, there's about three hundred and nine housing units. Six of which are single family detached. The rest are mobile homes, duplexes, condos, and apartments. And Tara can describe hers a little bit more, but but that's kind of the the one of the demographics that we have going. Both communities have significant Hispanic populations and tend to be a bit transient. And so we've had two different approaches. There was two stories though that I wanted to share with you that are indicative of of the area that that where I'm working and our volunteers. And that is, we haven't had a ton of service projects. We we had one, we worked at a neighborhood garden in the spring. But most of it has been through our Community Resource Center, which is at the Chapel on the northwest corner of the roundabout at 920 South and Freedom. And incidentally, we would welcome any of you as council members to stop by on a Tuesday or Thursday evening to stop in and see what's being presented. And mainly what's being presented are English as a second language, life skills, computer literacy, and piano lessons. And so you might think, piano lessons? Why are we doing piano lessons? Well, think about that. So you have, in our particular neighborhood, we we have volunteers from the neighborhood who are teaching children that live in the neighborhood with parents attending with their children. They're going home and then continuing to work on piano lessons, of which they may not have had an opportunity to do so before and to learn a skill, a talent. It also brings people, it's kind of a, I don't know if you what you want to call it, the doorbuster or the thing that brings people to the to the the Community Resource Center. It provides legitimacy. In fact, Alan Wilkins, our Director was meeting with one of the local ecclesiastical leaders. And he, and the ecclesiastical leaders said, we finally figured out the mystery of the green lanyards. And you see some of our volunteers today who are wearing green lanyards because that's how they've identified themselves with the green lanyards and the and the name tag. And and the the local neighborhood is now feeling more welcoming and comfortable with who are these people that are walking in our neighborhood, handing out flyers and then working in this resource center in the after hours? So the piano lessons provide kind of entrance into the neighborhood of something that is desirable that otherwise wouldn't have been offered. And it helps establish that legitimacy of the volunteers and their good intent to assist with and to provide a service that otherwise would not be provided. But I mentioned that we hadn't been a lot of service projects. There's been a couple at the trailer park where they are improving one of the the entrances. Because if you're familiar with the trailer, they don't have a typical door approach or porch. They're usually constructed afterwards. And so there was a local need. And then there was a local opportunity for someone living in the neighborhood to help provide that service. So again, locals providing for each other. Another neighbor saw this and said, hey, I'd, I'd like to sign up for that program. And the the answer was great. What can you do to help? Can you help pay for it? Can you help build it? Do you need some assistance? And so really, the approach has been locals helping locals helping building and fostering the community. And then the Wilkins would actually be here today, except they're talking to some of the local people who play the piano and the organ on Sunday to help out with also teaching piano lessons in the Community Resource Center. So again, it's an effort that we've really focused on locals helping locals. And certainly, we have some with all respect, gray haired and maybe lacking some hair seniors who are there to help provide some of those services and some of the leadership. But it's really building capacity in that neighborhood and starting to see a difference. It's been slow going. It's taken some time. We've we've thrown a few parties. We flipped a few burgers. Hand it out some cotton candy. And but it's great to see people showing up at one of the parties that we had, heard someone walking away saying, you know, I met someone today that I've lived next to for years, but I finally met them and got to talk to them and know them a little better now. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Tara. And we'll go from there. And if you have any questions, Tara and I will both be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think before I get started, we're actually going to watch one of the videos that gives kind of an overview of the initiative. It's not the service one, but the other one. Yes.
Only that of one Provo, where we feel united by community pride, love of neighbor, regardless of differences, and striving to improve Provo from our own corner of it, no matter where you live.
The My Hometown Initiative is designed to help build a community and improve the neighborhood in a way that residents will want to stay and invest their time, money, and effort in strengthening their community. The initiative offers opportunities for families to advance and prosper by providing programs to address the educational and social needs. The Community Resource Center, known as the CRC, will be the place where these opportunities will be available. The CRC is a safe space where people are welcomed, treated with respect, and there's no hidden or economic or religious agenda. They can come and learn new skills that will have an impact on their ability to communicate and contribute to the success of their families and to the community. The programs currently being offered here at the CRC is a kindergarten prep class, which will help prepare children to enter kindergarten. We have a financial skills class, which provides an opportunity to learn about budgeting, banking, credit scores, smart shopping, making wise financial decisions, taxes, and more. English as a second language, which has been by far the most popular and is indicative of the need that's here in this community. The classes that are coming, as Greg mentioned, we have piano lessons. I'll have our beginning computer classes, which we already have twenty-four people on a waiting list. And we'll be offering elementary school tutoring during the summer with fifty students. The My Hometown Initiative will help build community by having residents and volunteers work together in fixing, beautifying, and improving homes, one at a time. This will be accomplished through our Days of Service, which Greg has mentioned before. These service projects are planned and organized by the My Hometown Initiative volunteers and together with neighborhood residents in the city. Residents who can will pay for the materials for the projects on their property. If they're unable to pay, volunteers will rally to help procure donated materials, equipment, and expertise. The projects may include fence replacement or repair, roof repairs, painting, concrete repair, tree removal, landscaping, ramps for the disabled, and our community garden cleanup. Provo has very capable and willing residents. And we want to give them the tools and resources to build their own healthy hometown. The My Hometown Initiative is not only addressing improvement to the exterior of people's homes through home repair and beautification projects, but also improving relationships and resiliency inside the home by offering opportunities for learning and relationship building at the CRC.
What you're doing is going to change the the face of all of of Provo, which makes our jobs much easier. When the communities are united and they're working together, it really reduces the amount of work that we we need to do from a reactive standpoint. We can get out of our cars and be far more proactive. I carry a bag of basketballs in my car. So if I go by a park or a neighborhood and there's a young man or young girl at the park, we can give them a basketball and shoot hoops with them for a couple of minutes. And so any sports equipment that is needed for the kids in the community, all you need to do, Greg, is let me know. And that's coming from me personally. And I want to start today by, I know there's a young man somewhere in the neighborhood that's missing one of these. And so I'd like to present that to you to give to the the first young man.
Thank you.
So just watching that video, I think we've come a long way. And we're going to kind of report on some of the things that we've been doing since that kickoff event. Let's see. Oops, what am I doing? Okay, so give me the next one. Okay, as mentioned in that video, the My Hometown Initiative covers three basic pillars. The first is the Community Resource Center. As Dixon mentioned, his Resource Center is located just at the Roundabout at Ninth South and Freedom. In the Pioneer Park neighborhood, it's located just directly north of the Franklin Elementary School at 600 West and Third South. The Pioneer Neighborhood includes the area from Fifth West over to Center Street. And then, excuse me, Fifth West to I-15 and then Center Street down to the railroad tracks. We have the Community Resource Center, which is basically providing the opportunity for people to learn skills to enhance their lives. Then we have our Days of Service, which are days that we come together, that we identify projects that need to be done in the neighborhood to help beautify. And then we have social events. We want people to get outside of their comfort zones and get to know their neighbors. Okay, we can have the next slide. So these are just some of the pictures of the Community Resource Center. You can see that we've got our volunteers hard at work with many of the people from our community. The next slide. And this is a breakdown of the classes that have been offered at the Pioneer Park Resource Center. You can see our numbers so far in the enrollment session. Number one, we've had one hundred and sixty-one students and are anticipating three hundred and twenty-one as the next session starts. We've had eighty-eight graduates from our classes. English as a second language has been one of the most popular. We've also been offering financial skills, which the enrollment has gone up quite a bit. And then the also, as Dixon mentioned, the piano lessons are extremely popular, popular. We have the next slide. So just a few fun facts about the CRC classes. The students that sign up to take the piano lessons and if they they sign a contract, if they commit to practice between the lessons, come to their scheduled lessons and play in a recital, they'll be able to keep the keyboard that they were given. So a family in our community graciously offered to buy those keyboards, so that did not come out of our budgets. This is something that's really great, where we've got local families that are participating in the program. Also, students who attend the four-week financial skills class can enroll in a savers club. This is offered through Community Action Services. If they save at least twenty-five dollars a month for six months, they receive a two hundred dollar check back from Community Action. You have the next slide. The other class that we're off offering is a computer skill class. And those that graduate receive a free computer that's been donated. It's a refurbished computer from BYU. And so far, we have been able to give twenty-five of those out. Can I have the next slide? Okay, so now, this is probably my favorite part, is the Days of Service that we offer. We actually have a slide that's going to show, excuse me, a video that's going to show just kind of what a day of service looks like. Okay, if we can advance two more slides. Okay, these are just a list of some of the projects that we've done. In the Pioneer Park, we've completed sixty-four projects. Some of the bigger ones that we've done were, we did an installation of a handicap ramp for a young man in his early twenties who unfortunately had a really bad car accident and ended up paralyzed from his waist down. So we were able to build a ramp so he could easily access the front of his home. We've also done lots and lots of weeding and just general yard cleanup. For the National Day of Service, which happened to fall on our normal day of service, we combined with several BYU stakes. We had close to four hundred volunteers here volunteering. And we also got to see Councilwoman McCain and her family were there participating in that. You can see a list of the other things that we've been doing, one of those being the concrete repairs. A little fun story with that one. We helped a lady that was about to lose her home insurance because she had a root growing from a tree through her driveway, which created a huge tripping hazard. So we went in, were able to remove the roots and prepare it for the concrete. We arranged to have the concrete delivered. The homeowner had offered two hundred dollars. That's all she could afford for the repairs. So when the concrete company came, saw everyone dressed in their orange vests, he asked a couple of questions, what is this all about? And we explained what the My Hometown Initiative was all about. He offered to donate the concrete. So her two hundred dollars actually has gone into the Provo Foundation's account, which can now be used for other projects for other families that can't afford to pay for improvements they need to done to their homes. So it's kind of a pay it forward program as well. Can I have the next slide? We've also had the opportunity to partner with Habitat for Humanity, three projects that we've been able to do with them so far. The Lee Property, they helped us with painting the exterior of the home. The Bow Property is where the handicap ramp was installed. You can see that in the front of the house. And then the Duke Property. This included a lot of landscaping that was done and the painting of the fence. Okay, we have the next slide. We've also had three large social events, the first being one that we partnered with the Franklin Elementary School for their family night. We had a neighborhood pool party, which interestingly enough, many of our residents have never been to the rec center. They've never been to the pool. So this was a great opportunity to introduce them to that and also give them the the chance to go swimming at the pool. And then we had our Pioneer Parts Family Fun Night, which included just some games. We had entertainment and lots and lots of hot dogs donated by J. Dogs. We have the next slide. So I've mentioned a few of these, but we have created some great partnerships, the first being Franklin Elementary School, where over the summer, we were able to partner with them in providing some tutoring for some of their students. We've partnered with Community Action Services and Food Bank, which they've provided a lot of the instruction for our financial classes. Habitat for Humanity, United Way, BYU, the South Franklin Community Center, who's actually been referring a lot of their students, particularly for the computer classes to us. The Circles Program, and we actually have a for each group that's meeting at our Community Resource Center. Okay, we can have the next slide. We also wanted to mention that we received fifty thousand dollars to go towards the cost related to running the Community Resource Center. I don't know that we want to publicly say who that was, but it was an individual who gave us that money. And then five thousand dollars to go towards the keyboards. We received the one hundred refurbished laptop computers from BYU. And then we've also received equipment rental from Diamond Rental and Wheeler Machinery for the Days of Service projects. They've graciously provided equipment for all of the My Hometown programs throughout the state. Okay, can I have the next slide? This is just a breakdown of just the Pioneer Park expenses. Keeping in mind that the swag and Keeping in mind that the swag and marketing, some of those expenses are Dixon's as well. I don't want to feel like I'm the only one spending money. But I think combined, just out of the city's resources, we've spent just over $30,000 of the $100,000 that was granted to us this year. We can have the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit about our volunteers. So sitting behind me, you can see several people that are wearing their green lanyards. Some are not. Shame on you. These are some of our important volunteers that are over a lot of these programs. So we have the Bombs, who are executive directors. We have Jeff and Leanne Bills, who over our Days of Service. Alan and Daryl, I think Alan's the one that's here, Thompson that are over, they oversee the CRC. But Ray Dean and Harlan Hatfield are the directors over our Community Resource Center. So I'm glad that they're here today. So you can see the numbers that we've had of all of our service volunteers, which are 67 just in our area. We've had over 13,000 hours of volunteer time. Then we have our Community Resource Center volunteers. So these are not individuals that have been called, as you will. These service volunteers are actually service missionaries. The Community Resource volunteers are not missionaries. They're just people in the community that want to come and volunteer their time. We have 128 of those volunteers. These are people that are either teaching classes, providing tutoring or piano lessons. Then we have our Days of Service volunteers. So these are people that just come on the day, give a couple hours of service and then go home. So the total volunteers that we've had thus far, just from January 1st until October the 8th, is 945 volunteers, giving 19,292 hours of volunteer service. We have the next slide. So if we were to put a dollar amount to this, which I went and did a little research and found that the Volunteer Time Report, which is put out by the independent sector, which is a publication that kind of tracks volunteer trends throughout the country. This is run by the Do Good Institute. They are giving the value of a volunteer at $29.95 an hour. So if you were to calculate that out, we've got, in our return for the $100,000 investment that you gave us just for the Pioneer Neighborhood, we have $592,171.40 of volunteer time value. So.
Sorry, will you tell us the hourly rate again? What was it?
Yes, it's $29.95, which is an increase of 4.9 from last year.
Okay.
So that's the end of our presentation. Just hoping you have questions. I'm here, Dixon's here, and we have our lovely volunteers if you have any questions.
I was really hoping we could hit 600,000.
We're almost there.
That's amazing. That's amazing. Any questions or comments for Aaron Dixon, Mr. Shipley?
I'll just start off and thank our volunteers and folks who probably aren't here that are donating money and time and just really touching to see their, you know, folks are stepping up and, and thank you very much.
Councilor Ellsworth?
Yeah, I'll just say ditto to what Councilor Shipley said. This disproportionately positively impacts my district. And I just am so appreciative to every volunteer, every administrator, and everyone who's participated in this. It's making a tremendous difference and it's truly the kind of neighborhood organization that is well-positioned and collaborative enough to create a difference in our community. So thank you.
Mr. Fillmore?
Sure looks like we've got a great success on our hands.
Yes.
What is the long-term plan?
The plan is now we'll have, we'll be operating in these two neighborhoods probably for another couple of years. And then if it continues to succeed, we'll move to another neighborhood. And basically recreate this with the hopes that what we've created in this neighborhood will continue on their own. We're hoping to build leadership and just keep the continuity going. And from what I'm seeing, we are creating leaders in this neighborhood. It's really making a difference.
Of course, that's what it's all about, right? Is changing lives, improving lives. So do you have plans for, for lack of a better word, marketing, what you're doing to get more volunteers involved?
So we have our lovely force behind us. It's a lot of it is word of mouth. They are going out and getting their friends and others to join. It's not a hard sale. So getting people involved is not a hard thing for us to do.
I might just suggest that these, these numbers are so impressive that maybe we ought to share that in one of our monthly bulletins, Mayor, and tell people throughout the city who they can contact and get involved in this.
We can do that.
Thanks. Great work.
Thank you so much. Just echo everyone's thanks to all the volunteers and for that wonderful report. I was very excited about this when it started and am not at all surprised actually at all this success. It just seemed like a very very smart idea and one that was a long time in coming. So thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is item number seven. A discussion on ARPA funds. Justin Harrison, our executive director, will present this. And let me just remind the council that, or clarify to the council, today's work session discussion is a good opportunity for us to get some clarity about making some decisions about remaining ARPA funds, but those, that vote will not take place today. But if we have agreement from the council about how we want to spend the funds, then we would vote to have that put on an agenda in two weeks. So go ahead, Justin.
Good afternoon, council. Today, I know a few months back, you all heard from a number of city departments regarding a number of projects that have been proposed for possible ARPA fund allocations. Since that time, the council ARPA committee has been hard at work vetting some of those projects, getting more information from the departments as well as the administration. And we're here today to give you a little update there. To start, we will hopefully I can figure out the remote. Okay, thanks, Malia. Wanted to give you a little just quick overview of ARPA funds and what has been received by the city, what's been spent. In total, Provo City was awarded just shy of $34 million in ARPA funds from the federal government. 23.8 million of those funds were awarded as a non-discretionary allocation, meaning that they had to be spent in a specific way under the guidelines from the US Department of Treasury. Next slide. So the funds are really broken into two categories, the non-discretionary funds that I mentioned of roughly 23.8 million. The Treasury final rule that was released, gosh, a while back now, stipulated what those funds could be used for. They're generally, generally fall within these four categories of responding to the public health pandemic related to COVID-19, premium pay, water and sewer infrastructure and broadband infrastructure. That's what those, those funds were restricted to. The other allocation that the city received was $10 million based off of lost revenue. And this, under those rules, is allowed to be spent in a more discretionary fashion and can be spent generally on traditional government services. Lastly, the rule stipulated that funds must be obligated and spent by certain dates. So the funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and spent by December 31st of 2026. So although we still have some time, it's moving fast. Next slide. Thank you. This is, this is more of a breakdown of what the council has already appropriated. So as you can see, non-discretionary total allocation that was awarded to the city was roughly $23.8 million. Essentially, all of that money has been appropriated, just shy of $60,000 has not been, not been appropriated from that non-discretionary allocation. Of the $10 million discretionary allocation, 1.5 million was appropriated by this body about a month back for fire station one. So there's $8.5 million remaining of that non-discretionary, of that discretionary allocation. And that's really the purpose of this item tonight is to talk about potential projects that that $8.5 million could be spent on.
Justin, could you clarify that the 57,635 non-discretionary allocation not yet appropriated, does that mean that's money available to us right now?
That is, that is money that's available and, you know, why that small figure still lies out there, I'm not entirely sure. So I am following up with, with finance on that to see where that kind of lies or was it meant to go somewhere else? But that is available as of current.
It's a crumb. We'll take it.
Yeah. Anyone will take $57,000. Next slide, please. This is just a more granular breakdown of where and when those allocations and appropriations were made. You can see in the blue, the blue column, approved ARPA funding amount, those were allocations that were made either within the final budget in FY '22 or FY '23 or at previous council meetings. Everything other than the last row for the fire station, everything about that, that blue column, that's the 23.8 million of non-discretionary allocations that have already been made. So this is, this is current as, as of just the other day after verifying with, with finance and so really, there's roughly eight and a half million dollars left. That eight and a half million is in that discretionary fund and as I mentioned before, the ARPA committee has spent some time vetting out some of the projects, meeting with departments to see where those, where those dollars would be best spent. And if we can go to the next slide, those projects are laid out in, in very light detail here, but happy to jump into any one of these projects individually. There is not a specific recommendation from the committee, although there are some, some feelings from the committee on where some of these funds might be best spent. They're really not listed in any, in any specific order by priority, but by proposed dollar amount. So happy to jump into any of these more specifically to provide more information. Also, I know Mr. Wayne Parker is here to talk about a few of the administration's priorities that they had set forward at that work meeting a few months ago and provide additional information. Any questions?
Yeah, I wonder if we should just have Mr. Parker present that, what you had in mind and then.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Justin, Slate Canyon, I was thinking that we were going to kind of take that in chunks and phases. Is this for the first phase or the next upcoming phase or is this for the whole thing?
So this was the, the high level estimate that Parks and Rec had talked about when the committee met. There was a joint really effort to, to talk through with Public Works and Parks and Rec on with the ASR project going on in that area, how would that overlap? I'm sorry, that's Rock Canyon.
Yeah, I'm talking about Slate Canyon. It's listed here as eight to 10 million, but I thought we were going to take it, we were, I was thinking about the next phase, which I thought was closer to two to four million.
Yes, so this was, this was the general, and I apologize, that was Rock Canyon, not Slate Canyon. So Slate Canyon, this was the general estimate from Parks for, for the entire, I didn't have any breakdown as far as phases go. I don't know if Scott would like to provide any additional information. I know it's still in the early planning phase and there was additional land that was recently purchased by the city. So.
Okay, well, just for my own personal reference, I guess if we were to take this in phases, it would be a fraction of that.
Okay.
Why don't we hear from Mr. Parker then?
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the council. Let me just highlight very quickly a little bit of background and I'll, I'll mention briefly about Regional Sports Park and then would propose if it's acceptable to you to let Scott Henderson come up and give you a little update on the work they're doing. I think you received from him a little document that's called the Regional Sports Park by the Numbers. It gives you some economic impact and, and general cost estimates. So let me talk, just kind of set the stage a little bit. And then I'd like to talk about the city center request and then we'll let Scott follow up on the, on the sports park. So as you'll recall, just to give you a quick refresher, we began a process now about 18 months ago to consider redevelopment of the city center block. You'll recall, we went through a process and selected a master developer, went through an RFP process, interviewed, actually did site visits, took a hard look at a number of things that our two finalist development partners had done, both in Denver and in Eugene, Oregon. We selected a master developer and then went through a process of just under a year of due diligence with that master developer as we looked at options. Finally, they came back with a pro forma that required a significant level of subsidy from the city, substantially more than we expected. And so we took a step back and said, well, that's, that was a great experiment, didn't pan out. One of those innovation efforts that sometimes bears fruit and sometimes doesn't. This one didn't. So we're currently rethinking direction. We have reviewed a preliminary RFQ/RFP process. We have some unanswered questions, one of which is the ARPA allocation. And so we've kind of pushed a little bit of a pause button on the, on the RFQ/RFP process for a new development partner. And looking at a couple of other questions that we feel like we need answers to, including the ARPA allocation. So back in June, we submitted to you a priority, three priority projects for the $10 million discretionary portion of ARPA. That included five and a half million dollars for the regional sports park, $3 million for parking at the, for the city center to subsidize the city center development project and and then one and a half million dollars for Fire Station One to pair with the money that was set aside from the CARES Act allocation from the federal government to replace our older and less functional fire station number one in downtown currently. So again, we, we did an update with you. When we went through, when you asked departments to come and make presentations on their requests for ARPA funding, we talked about potentially broadening the use of this $3 million allocation for a combination of parking, demolition of the building and potential general subsidy to a redevelopment project on the city center block. As time has passed, we've become a lot more concerned about demolition. And let me explain a number of things. First, it's becoming a little more urgent. We've had break-ins, damage, squatters, those kinds of things in the old city center building, which we've been kind of constantly fighting a battle on over the last several weeks. We have increased utility costs because the, the utilities for Fire Station One, as it currently exists, are fed from the existing city, city center buildings, so boiler, chiller, electrical, data, all of those utilities are provided from the city center. And so we've had to keep the lights on and the plumbing working and the HVAC system going to meet the needs of current Fire Station One. And so we're now incurring not quite double costs of utilities, but more than we expected to have to cover. I could get into graphic detail about this next one, but let me just suffice to say that we're having pest control issues in the old building. And you can, whatever you imagine, it's probably that and worse. And then of course, inflation is eroding our purchasing value. And so the longer we go without knowing exactly what our timing on demolition will be, is, is creating some cost challenges for us. So again, demolition will be required under any scenario, whether we pair up with a development partner and try to do a redevelopment project now, whether we, if we don't find an adequate or effective redevelopment partner and we decide to just sort of tear down the building and mothball the site, you know, pave it for parking in the short run and, and come back and regroup later, under any scenario, we need to take the building. and come back and regroup later, uh under any scenario, we need to take the building down. It, we uh we have a critical path item. We've talked about Fire Station One. We have to come up with temporary quarters. We have uh we have property we have leased in the downtown for uh Fire Station One. It's the, it's the building that we used to use for um uh for the COP office before we moved them into the new building. And we need to retrofit that to provide, uh for example, sleeping quarters and showers. Right now, we just have a couple of small restrooms, and so we've got a little bit of uh upgrade work to do to that facility. In addition, we have to provide a cover for the ambulance, which is currently located in Fire Station One. And so we've again got some some costs associated with that, and it's been very difficult for us to find a remodeling contractor, uh which may require us to start to do some of our own work, but we've put out three different requests for proposals. We've got zero responses for a small remodel, and so again, we're trying to work through that. And we also have to close out the data center in the in the old building. So we're getting very close. We've got probably three more weekends of work to do to relocate the data center from the existing city center building to to our city hall building today. Um and so those have been the critical path items before we could really start in earnest on the on the asbestos abatement and demolition. So uh finally, we think clearing the land will help facilitate redevelopment when we have a little more of a blank canvas uh for a development partner to come in and work with us. So we think that's a positive if we get the demolition going before we actually even have a development partner on onsite. Uh and we would work uh very hard to uh maximize the value of the three million dollar allocation for asbestos abatement and uh development uh or in demolition as we're going in tandem with the solicitation of proposals for redevelopment. Um our our current cost estimates are slightly more than the three million dollars. We have some value engineering yet to do on that and think we can uh bring our budget in um at or below the three million dollar ARPA allocation. So again, our intent would be to, at current is to partner with the developer to provide parking for City Hall, bake that into our um redevelopment uh RFQ draft, uh generate tax revenue and economic investment in the west end of downtown on area that's currently not generating any property tax for the city or the school district or others, and to spur additional redevelopment nearby as we work to do a quality redevelopment effort. Uh we obviously have other financing options that we could consider moving forward if we are, if we need to provide some subsidy for redevelopment and that include, could include um a portion of the land value. Uh we would potentially, you know, have the option of selling the land for less than market value. Um and we could again explore some tax increment financing on the on the block as well. So again, we we think we have tools available to stimulate the kind of redevelopment project we'd like to see downtown. And again, as we go through the RFQ RFP process, well, a lot of that will be refined. We'll know a lot more what the pro forma for a given development looks like and what might be required to uh to facilitate the right kind of redevelopment. So so that's kind of where we are in the process and why we think allocating this three million dollars is becoming uh sort of more and more urgent in the process. So with that, um be happy to answer any questions. Maybe it'd be best to turn the time to Scott and talk about regional sports park, and then we can do questions after that. So if you're okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
Turn my time over to Mr. Henderson.
Wayne. Mr. Mr. Philmer has a quick.
Before you step down.
Yes, sir.
Just give us a sense of what your current estimate is on the demolition cost alone.
Well, we think our uh our asbestos abatement will probably be in the range of one point eight to two point two million dollars. And we think we're about a million dollars in demolition. So so that puts us right close to the three million dollar number. Now, some of that we might be able to do in-house. Uh for example, Fire Station One had the asbestos abated several years ago, and so uh that would be a relatively quick demolition. And so that could actually run in tandem with demolition or with asbestos abatement in the city center building. But we have ceiling tiles, roofing, uh pipe wrap, um floor tiles, uh all have elements of asbestos from the nineteen seventies uh construction. And so again, it's a pretty extensive asbestos, asbestos asbestos abatement project uh before we can even begin the the actual physical demolition of the building. So so that's, that's where we have currently been.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Scott. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Chair and Council. I'll use the um regional sports work by the numbers as a guidepost for this presentation. But I think what you'll find from this regional sports park project is a a series of great accomplishments, even coming to the point that we are right now, and it's something that we are quite proud of. Let's start with the land acquisition. Um this was a negotiation with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints and where they supported the use for this property. And it was going to be um utilized as a mitigation property from our sale of Tim Kwanis Park. So we were, as forced with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, you must use any proceeds from the sale of an area with that stamp on it towards the creation of additional space. So that purchase price was three point five million dollars. So we used the proceeds of that mitigation sale towards the purchase that program, and we are currently free of debt on that as of this fiscal year. So that is now property completely paid for. We know things have dramatically changed on the west side and the excitement and the development that's happening over there um from our development services there are properties that are selling somewhere between um two hundred thousand and five hundred thousand per acre now, and we purchased this one hundred acre property at thirty five thousand per acre. So right now, this property is worth somewhere between twenty million and fifty million. And our previous community development director actually said this might be the best real estate deal in the history of Provo. And it took a a brand new mayor and a congressman and everybody to meet with the presiding bishop Rick all in one meeting to make this happen. That was quite an accomplishment. Talking about this pay as pay as we went approach that we've been doing on as we go. So we have lifted a one hundred acre site somewhere between six to eight feet, and a hundred acres is a big area. And so that's been quite of an accomplishment, and most of it has come through great partnerships with the federal government and the Provo River Delta Project. We've also, if anybody digs a hole in Provo, most likely our project team's going to ask them, what are they doing with the dirt after they're done? And we've been able to great do some, have some great partnerships, and we have filled up this site and also working with our internal city departments on creating that. And we have really taken this as the pan ago with, there's no debt associated with. The total market value, if you just went out and hired a contractor to lift a one hundred acre site um between six and ten feet, is probably eighteen million dollars. We've been able to do that as we go for less than four million dollars. So that is something we are really proud of and excited about to be in the position that we are now. Then this just hasn't been an unscientific process. Everything has been inspected and proctored the the entire time to make sure everything is um both up to code for compaction and structural integrity. Even the roads that were done by the Delta Restoration Project to the correct subgrade for roads as they come in. So that was a value of nearly a half a million dollars that was provided by the federal government to help with the road load-in for the material they were bringing to the site. The construction method we have ta- chosen to take on this is we are acting as our own general contractor and working directly with subs as we install um utilities, um working towards electrical conduit and we do curb and gutter. All those things, we are acting as our general and and hiring that work out. And then we will continue to be directly procure. So acting as our general, we save the general contractor markup on it. So we're, our project team is really stretching themselves in this aspect and really doing an amazing project. But quite frankly, Provo Parks and Recreation has a pretty good record for pro- project management. So I'm hoping something that that we can all be proud of together on what comes about out of our department. You know, and what projects are managed by people at our department seem to put us in a very good place. So what impact this has if this funding happens, is it escalates to playing service development by spring of twenty twenty one? That means that we have irrigation system in and we start putting sod down in spring of twenty one, give ourselves two growing seasons, and then we're ready to go. It's the timeframe, so we're, because we understand that with um this money going towards the facility, people are anxious to get that economic impact from the facility in their community. That is a unique thing about this Parks and Recreation project. It it has a profound economic impact and brings people to our community. It also keeps us compliant. This funding keeps us compliant with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which allows them to be also partner in on the development of the project. And the county grant, um Utah County um showed their support for this project and what it does almost immediately with a two and a half million dollar grant right at the the front end of us looking at this even as a prospective project, but they also put a timeframe on it. And if we do not have it operational by that timeframe, then they, that money would have to go back. Let's talk about the economic impact. Forty million dollars annually uh was done by a study on the Utah County Convention and Visitors Bureau. So I think Keith Maury have stood at our side during a a presentation for the council and said, you know, until we had gone down the concept of the airport, that this was the biggest impactful project for the economic development of Provo that he could think of. He can't imagine one that have have a more impact, and it focuses on hospitality, retail and restaurants, which were some of our um industries hit hardest by the COVID pandemic. So focusing on those is something important to us. We do plan on this being a self-sufficient operations plan to for it to bring in close to three quarters of a million dollars in revenue for its budget and also cover those same costs in the operating. And this department has shown it does that pretty well with the rec center, the golf course and the Peaks Ice Arena. So we plan to use that same model and quite frankly, that same business model in government to go towards that. Finishing out lastly with the local benefit, right now we have three hundred and thirty teams playing on eleven existing fields. That's not enough fields in Provo, and if we're going to tackle probably our biggest pandemic, which is childhood obesity, we need to get our kids active, and just this last fall, we are experiencing a tsunami of registration of people coming out after the pandemic of wanting to get active and taking um advantage of our programs. And we're in our program, we had sixteen hundred kids in our Provo City Fall Soccer Program, but we had to leave three hundred and thirty on the waiting list, and that was based on fields. So this has a local benefit to our programs and our kids, whether they're playing in Provo City programs or they're playing in our competitive programs, because we want our kids active, we want our kids playing, we want that active lifestyle happen happening quickly in their lives. So any questions about the Provo Regional Sports Park?
Counselor Shipley? Yeah, can you speak to the timing of sod for the fall? What, I mean, tell us a little bit more about what that means. I I don't, you know, we don't do commercial sodding very often as a council, probably, so it'd just be good to understand what the timing.
So what we.
What's important about the timing, sorry?
If the funding is approved, that the funding with a pay as you go approach, as we tell you, funding is a trigger. So if we were approved fairly sooner, then we would know that our project would be amping up and getting in and getting irrigation and everything ready to go and trying to get that before next winter. Probably would not be a good decision to either seed or sod right before next winter. So this next year would be doing infrastructure, getting everything ready, and then we would come back in the spring with the sod then of twenty twenty four and then allowing for um to grow season. So that puts us operational. Um we think we could even, you know, having a spring and summer grow in, that we could possibly be operational for fall of twenty twenty four and start booking tournaments and getting the benefits out of this complex. So that this this funding really escalates that that availability to a to a point where we could start programming it much earlier.
Alright, thank you. Um uh could you also speak to, uh you and I spoke earlier today, and I I've shared this with some on the council. I'm not sure I've had a chance to share it with everybody, but earlier uh Justin had presented Rock Canyon as needing another one and a half million dollars to cover the gap on the master plan implementation, and I know uh I had expressed, uh and I don't know, you know, interest in making sure that we didn't sacrifice that need to cover that gap. Um and I and I was interested in a win-win. And you seem to have a solution for that. I'll remind uh the rest of the council that the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance had expressed interest uh to us, uh to um Scott and Doug and and me when I, we were in a meeting with uh Tim Whipple, who who uh represented them, that they would be willing to fundraise and that they were pretty confident that they could raise about a half a million dollars. You indicated that you'd be willing to match that dollar for dollar. Um so in theory, if that fundraising happens, which I'm pretty confident it will, um Mr. Whipple's a bit of a miracle worker when it comes to things like that. Um we could show goodwill from the city by matching it. Um that would get us to a million. And then you said that you're confident that the extra money can be anticipated and incorporated into your uh CIP planning and expenses, and you'd find ways to cover that gap from, without asking for additional funds from ARPA. So could you just, I I don't know if you want to, I already just summarized what you told me. I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to explain that and that we understood from our perspective that on that list, uh as far as I'm concerned, we don't need to ask for that one point five. We don't need to consider it. ARPA funds because of of this development.
And I think all that you described is made possible because Doug Robbins and our Parks Project Team went before the county and was supportive, the Rock Canyon Project was supported with a two million dollar grant. And I hope you see a pattern here in Parks and Recreation is we love all of our projects and we put our energy behind their funding and and try and make sure that they happen as quickly and as timely as possible. But what you described, George, is then leaves that million and a half. Parks and Recreation has always had a commitment with the support of the council to match fundraising dollar for dollar and being able to, yeah, so anything raised by our friends in the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance, we're willing to match, and then we can sit down and look at um both ways we can work with volunteers. Tara described the value of volunteers, and that creates a connection to that area, which can bring the cost down. Or we can look at other ways and funding, work with the council on that. So I think with with the grant and with the support of the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance, we were there. I really feel confident that we are there and we're excited about that project and excited to see that master plan taken to the finish line.
And I was just doing a back of the napkin calculation that if we got forty million dollars of uh sales uh spent in Provo from the soccer complex, it brings in almost three million dollars to the city coffers if I'm doing my calculations correctly, so maybe we can think about ways to use the soccer complex uh benefits of the city to other purposes within the city that.
That doesn't surprise me at all. You've already made that calculation.
The uh any other questions for Mr. Henderson? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me just remind everybody of the time. So we do have ADUs to talk about. I mean, we can go a little longer on this item. Um but again, what we're looking for is um some decision about what we would want to put on the agenda in two weeks regarding the eight point five uh million that remains to be, well, eight point five plus fifty seven thousand dollars.
One, one question I had is I understood from other cities and counties that they were using ARPA funds that restricted ARPA funds for water conservation, and I just wanted to verify with staff uh adjusted if that was, I assume that's allowed to use water conservation is fund water conservation through.
I will, I will have us look into that and verify. But um yeah, I'm happy to reach out. Are there any specific cities that you know of that are are doing that or? What's that?
Salt Lake County.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm not, I I'm not totally sure which funds they use, but I know that they used ARPA funds. So it would be good to know, and and I thought I understood from staff a few months ago that there was uh likely a case to be made for that.
Okay.
But yeah, clarification appreciated.
Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, so I had a question about the old city center building and surplusing. If there's any plans immediately to surplus building materials, furniture, the cool old bells, all sorts of things there. Um and if that's the case, what what do you think you would gain, like financially from doing that surplus? Or were you waiting to fold that into some sort of contract? Because it seems that if we're going to demolish it, then we need to take care of surplusing ourselves. Cause it seems that if we're going to demolish it, then we need to take care of surplusing ourselves.
I know there, there's two options there and I think we could explore both sides of it. As we hire a company to demolish, a lot of times you get a much better rate if they take on the, the surplusing of the area and then they discount that from the process. If we're less than impressed with the bid on the surplusing, then we can do that ourselves and look at that option and see what it takes to do that. So I think we still have a couple of options to make a decision there. But I think the, the true number will come when we get that formal bid on the demolition that accounts for what credit they give us for surplusing what is left in there. I, we don't, I think we know what the total demolition number and abatement numbers are, but we don't know. And especially in this construction season, it's best not to speculate until you get the bid.
Can I remind counselors to keep the microphone nice and close to your mouth?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Fillmore, sorry.
So Mr. Henley, are you asking now with respect to winding up our ARPA discussion for a motion? Or are you looking for just a consensus?
We would need a motion to put it on the agenda, whatever we put on the agenda in two weeks.
Then let me go ahead and make a motion that we put on the agenda in two weeks. Council's approval for the two main items that have been discussed already. $3 million to the city center demolition effort, 5.5 million for the sports complex.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion? Hovin?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do I have a discussion on that motion?
I just want to clarify that that effectively precludes all other projects. Like we're done spending ARPA funds, except for that 57,000, like that's it, right?
That would be it.
We're done.
I had a question maybe for Mr. Parker regarding the, or I don't, it sounds like Scott knows a lot about this too. So I don't know who's the best person to ask. But the question is really if we were to say, you know, in two weeks' time, we allocate the 3 million. But then you go through the process. I mean, I don't know if this is similar to the, you know, million that we promised towards the West Side Grocery Store. And then, you know, there's some sort of negotiation that goes on and this may or may not end up being the amount that you need. Sounds like it's quite possible it will, but if there's a possibility that it's not, we would just hear back right from you at the point at which we know that the money's not needed or some of it is not needed.
I can tell you, if we pull that off, we will celebrate by bringing back some money. Yeah, that's, yeah, we would not propose to reallocate those dollars in another way, but, but to bring them back for you to reallocate if we are able to pull that off and get it done for less than 3 million.
Okay. I'll just say my, I'll express my opinion on the motion. I feel very comfortable with 5.5 for the soccer complex. I feel, I know that there are a couple of other prevailing issues in the city regarding, you know, moving Slate Canyon along regarding water conservation. And, but, but I, I don't, I don't, none of those leads me to believe that we should compromise on that 5.5. I am interested in finding ways to find grants for water conservation if possible. I don't know how much, we still don't have any idea really how much we need. So I, I know the timing on this isn't great. I, I kind of wish we had more of thing, more things lined up to have that information. But I know that Mr. Decker has expressed confidence that we could find grant money for, for covering some of those needs. So I'm willing to find other ways to spend money to, if necessary, on water conservation. And for Slate Canyon, I know that if we're sealing the deal on Rock Canyon, then Parks and Rec's attention, I know we'll be able to turn to Slate Canyon. I know the citizens will be and activists who, who care about the canyons will be turning their attention to Slate Canyon and we'll have a clearer picture, I think, going forward as to exactly what we want to do. We did just spend over a million dollars on Slate Canyon with a property there. So I do feel comfortable with spending this 3 million additionally for the city. But recognizing that as far as I see these things, these are not, at least I want to believe, always zero sum decisions. I mean, if we decide we're going to spend this money in this way, I think it still gives us the discretion as a council to spend other money in other ways that we know are needed in the city. You know, obviously every time we spend money, we have to find a way to have it in order to spend it. But I, it does concern me that we're kind of losing money at the city site at this point. And that feels to me a reason to shore that up so we prevent that. And then, you know, on the flip side, I like the idea that the sooner we invest in the soccer complex, the sooner we will have some revenue for the city. So those both feel to me sound decisions. And I'm, I'm ready to put those two items on the agenda in, in two weeks' time.
I, I had a question for Mr. Parker, if I could. So I just, a point of clarification on something you were talking about before. You, you mentioned that we kind of had gone through an RFP process, then we were going to go through an RFP process again on it, but we kind of backed off with the idea that ARPA is kind of a key piece, obviously of how that happens. But I wonder if you could speak to, did we go out and solicit independent of ARPA being part of this already and come back with no good options, or have we just not gone out yet because we wanted to see what that was first?
So it's a, it's not an either or answer. And let me just tell you, we have, we have not put out an RFQ or RFP up to this point. We have met with developers that we think would have an interest and we've explored their ideas. We've looked at a couple of preliminary pro formas. As, as should be expected, the challenge in our proposal process is that we need 250 parking stalls available for City Hall. And, and in every case, they've kind of come back and said, yeah, you're not going to get that for free. There's going to have to be something here. And again, whether it's a combination of, you know, allocation of ARPA funds, whether it's and, you know, a, you know, some, some kind of joint use agreement over time, whether it's a tax increment deal or potentially writing down the cost of the land, there's going to have to be something. The other thing we heard from those developers was we're happy to figure out parking. We probably can't figure out parking and demolition and asbestos removal. That's going to overburden the project in a way that will be more difficult for you to meet those costs. So, so again, the feedback we've had from developers is blank slate is probably more important to us than an immediate way to figure out parking. But parking is going to require something. So, so again, I think we have, we have, we have not put out the RFQ simply because we don't know what the ARPA landscape is and $3 million is important to that equation. So, so I think once we have a solid view of the ARPA allocation, then we will go, we'll go straight out and try to figure out the, the development.
But things like increment and the land value itself were all part of these discussions. I mean, they were all on the table. It wasn't just ARPA or no ARPA. It was, there are lots of other potential benefits to a developer that might be independent of ARPA.
That's correct. Yeah. And again, we haven't, we haven't spoken, you know, we're ready to write you a check for X, Y or Z. Where the part of the RFP process, so once we get through an RFQ and select a smaller group of qualified developers, then we'll go through an RFP process. And part of that will be them bringing us a pro forma they're willing to live up to, which shows how to close the gap, if there is one, between what the development will support from a market perspective and what it will cost to do. And, and so we'll be, you know, we'll obviously be looking at that as we get into the process. But, but again, we just wanted to know what the landscape was before we began those discussions.
And one more, sorry, quick follow-up. Demolition of Fire Station One has to happen at the exact same time as demolition of the rest of the building?
No, it could actually happen sooner. And so the key question is can we, how quickly can we get fire out of the building? And then the demolition of Fire Station One could begin very quickly. And thus the rebuilding of Fire Station One could begin quickly. The rest of the building can come down later, but obviously because of the other concerns we have, we'd like to make that happen as soon as possible.
An estimated cost for the remodel on the temporary spot for fire?
I don't know that we know that. Do you know Scott offhand? Or Isaac, I don't know, have you guys looked at that? I guess we don't have a number on that one yet.
But that's already budgeted in what we've already allocated to Fire Station One for the temporary spot?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'd already spoke, but I, I'm wondering if I could ask a follow-up question and then maybe make a, a slight amendment to the motion. We allocated a million dollars for the, I alluded to the West Side Grocery Store with a similar kind of condition that if you didn't need all that money. I, I, I don't know how much longer we, you know, we were anticipating that you would need to hold out that money before something happens. It's been quite a while. I don't know what all the ins and outs and complications you've had to confront with that might be. But I'm wondering if there's any, any similar crumbs that we might sweep from the table from that to add to the $57,000 and put that toward water conservation?
I think we can let you know, and I, I know this is sounding like a broken record. We can let you know soon. We are, we are working with a grocery store chain on, on a West Side location. We've now seen three or four iterations of a site plan, you know, which, which again, we're trying to work through and explore, create some challenges in terms of adjoining neighborhoods and so on. So we're trying to work through those. It is in real estate committee with the, with the grocer. And so we're just kind of waiting for them, for the real estate committee to come back and say, yeah, we're fully in. And then we're ready to make an announcement and finalize a development agreement deal. We don't, again, know exactly what that looks like until they really get a green light from their real estate committee. So, so we're at that stage and again, we're a little bit at their mercy. We push hard. Nobody's pushed any harder than the mayor on this particular grocery store chain. And in fact, in, in meetings, you know, within the last several months, where there was kind of a, you know, put up or shut up discussion. And so it's, it is moving, it's moving forward. It's not moving at the pace we wish. So it's a little premature for us to say, but again, I don't think we have any interest in spending any more of those dollars than we have to. So, so I, I know that that may sound a little hollow, but it's probably the best I can give you on, on this day.
I appreciate that. So my, my substitute motion would be to just add the 57,600 and whatever it is as allocated to be considered for appropriation in two weeks for water conservation.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Fillmore seconds. Any discussion of that motion, substitute motion? Yeah. Sorry, Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, so my understanding is we weren't quite sure where that 57,000 number came from. So are we comfortable allocating it to something else if we don't know why it wasn't already zeroed out with our previous appropriations?
Great question.
If council's comfortable, we can follow up with finance and make sure that isn't available about the, the numbers came from finance. So I am fairly comfortable saying they are. My bigger concern is verifying whether or not those funds, those non-discretionary funds can be used for water conservation. We're happy to make, verify that with the treasury rule and, and bring that allocation as well, should it be acceptable under those rules.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Assuming that we can use those non-discretionary funds for water conservation, I would just add an asterisk to your motion. That's really orienting those funds towards citizen education and turf replacement and kind of end user conservation projects, not necessarily hard infrastructure projects. That's my intent or hope.
Yeah, I think I share that. And I think what we'll look forward to is what you and the staff learned from that conference and from our audit. I think we'll have a clearer picture and we can sit down together. We can talk with Public Works and get a sense of whether or not there's already funding for some things that we might want to do, what other additional funds we might need. Or that out. So I, we have a second substitute motion on the table. So I need to vote on the substitute motion to add to, I wasn't subtracting or anything. I was adding it to Mr. Fillmore's motion. So I'll call for a vote on the substitute motion. Counselor Ellsworth? Your Fillmore?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counselor Hovin?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. So now we have a motion on the table for the 8.5 plus the 57,635. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Yep.
Counselor Shipley?
Mr. Henley, I asked some questions, but if I could make a quick comment on it?
Absolutely.
So I, I guess I'm sitting here in, in some discomfort about allocating all of this in two weeks. And I'll just say, I, I, it's not that these projects don't have merit and that they're not important and that we shouldn't do them. It, it, I'm anxious and maybe I'm anxious because I'm a, I'm a committee chair trying to make sure that we're representing the whole council on different things that we've discussed. Specifically, you know, Counselor Whipple had a, had a, had a, you know, a, a goal to make sure and get a restroom at a park. And we're talking about a half a million dollars. We had talked about some housing goals. We had talked about some other things. And I just want to make sure that we discuss and flesh it out fully before we, before we get to a vote. So I don't mind voting to get to a vote. But I guess I just feel like over the next few weeks, we've all got a lot of work to do behind the scenes too, and discussions to have to make sure we feel like we've got everybody's thoughts on the table before we get there. I, I don't feel like I'm there yet today. So I'm just feeling a little bit uncomfortable today with all of it being allocated in two weeks. Even if, like I say, we, we were to get done with it and, and find that they were the best priorities we could have voted on. I just am feeling a little bit of discomfort today.
Any other comments or discussions this motion? Counselor Ellsworth?
I'll just say I agree with Counselor Shipley. We've had these conversations through the ARPA committee and there's a lot of needs and your, my hope, I guess, is that we're not reactive during this process, but that we're thoughtful and proactive and, and there will continue to be needs and there will continue to be issues that pop up. And I think it's important to consider other mechanisms or avenues for funding what's, what's needed in the city and to also realize what's, what's a want and what could be delayed and what's not immediately pertinent to Provo with these funds.
Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, I'd like to thank my fellow counselor, Dave Shipley, for raising those, those issues. At this point, really what we're, we're considering is to approve the city's allocation that they'd originally given us in their budget, even though how we spend the ARPA funds is rightly a decision of the city council. And we didn't really have a lot of input before the city had, had given us that budget. And it took some work to extract those numbers from it to see how the city wanted to allocate those funds. And so I'm glad that we've done that and we can see where it's going and everything. Another concern that I have with the sports park is that we were asked to allocate this money to accelerate the completion of that park with the idea that the park was going to be getting done in a few years anyway. We'd be seeing those economic benefits. But it appears that there weren't really funds budgeted to get that done because Parks is really great at scraping things together and, and getting grants and things like that. So even though it was presented to us as an acceleration of the funding, what it really is, is the funding to, to get that park done. I have full confidence that our Parks Department would find funding for it. If we did not do it, it would take the additional time. My consolation on this is that I know if we did this, it would free up their energy and resources to find funds for the other priorities that we've been able to identify through this process that perhaps were not on their radar quite so much. And I'm hopeful that we could continue to work with administration as we've identified these things so that those also become administrative priorities.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comment, then I will call for a vote on the motion. I'll begin with Counselor Fillmore.
Yes.
Uh, I, George Hanley will vote yes. Counselor Hoban?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Okay, that vote is unanimous. So we will look forward to seeing that on the agenda in two weeks. And I echo, uh, Mr. Shipley's uh, injunction to thoughtful and, and explore this, be thinking about it and, and consider it of flexities regarding this issue in the next two weeks. Um, we uh, have time for a break. Um, but not very much. Or you're okay? Do you need to? Okay, she has taken a knee break. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five minute break. I know it says thirteen minutes, which is a strange number, but that was to make it nice and easy. On the end, but let's take a five minute break, which is very quick. We'll try to be back by three forty-seven if we can.
Recording stopped.
Yeah, that wafer crunchy thing was. Okay. Uh, Malia? Do you know where Elizabeth is? Okay. Can we start without her or we can't? Okay. Yeah, I don't want to get, you don't want to get in trouble. Was that a what? Uh huh. Yeah. Right. Yeah, we're not, we're not voting on that. No. Yeah. Are we ready to start? Sorry, Melanie. Okay. 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 We need to, I need to start the meeting. Can I talk to you afterwards? I, I, we need to start the meeting. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we need to get started.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back. Um, thanks for being prompt. So we can get on to our last item, which is, uh, item number, so item number eight has been continued. I will move to item number nine, which is an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding accessory dwelling units. This has a citywide application. This is presented by Malia Daly, our policy analyst.
All right, um. I believe we have like fifty minutes to go over this. And so the purpose today, so we heard this in the night meeting on October fourth, and that was the first um, hearing after it was from Planning Commission. So we asked for it to come back into this work meeting, then also in the night meeting for its second hearing. And the work meeting today to answer some questions. Um, that were brought up in the October fourth meeting and then also address some changes that the Housing Committee made to the Third Amendment. Um, which is known as the pathway amendment. So. We'll go through this and we'll see if the clicker works for me or no. I don't know if that was me or Justin, but. So these are some of the main questions that were brought up and then we're just gonna go over those. And then if any council member has any questions specific to these or any other questions, planning staff is here, um, and Brian is here to answer legal questions, and we also have zoning, um, enforcement staff as well to help. So first, um, there's been some questions about parking requirements. And already written in chapter fourteen thirty, um, which is the accessory dwelling units section of our code, there's already a requirement of a minimum of four off-street parking spots. Plus, uh, one additional off-street spot for each tenant that has a, um, with, with or without a car. So there's already requirements in the code for parking. Um, that's tied to the number of tenants within an ADO, but then also just the original dwelling. Um, HOA exclusions, HB eighty-two actually does not allow for HOA specific exclusions. So we couldn't write in specific things to HOA within our own code. Cause state code would trump, um, our own amendments for that. Um, specific zone exclusions. Um, if you remember, there's a motion made in October fourth meeting regarding the West Side Amendment, so the Second Amendment about excluding SDP five, which is the, um, Iverhams Broadview Shore Development. Um, in reviewing the code, that's actually already excluded. It's already in the listed excluded zones in chapter fourteen thirty that were part of the list of excluded zones that were passed in December of last year. So there already is a list of zones excluded already within the code. Um, which you can um, refer to just in section four thirty oh two, fourteen thirty oh two. Um, I'm gonna skip minimum lot sizes and come back to it. Immediate properties. So there's some questions around the specific of the language in Amendment Three. And this is regarding the petition process that applicants that want an ADO have to get signatures of sixty-six percent of their neighbors for immediate properties. So this is part of what Housing Committee worked on to go back in and update the language for that, um, Third Amendment. And make that more specific, which I will be going over that once we get to that specific amendment to review it. But also, um, even with this more specific language, individuals, if they are applying, would not be left alone to do this. Um, when they came in to start the process, to start their application, city staff would be there to help them identify which properties they would need to contact. And so, um, throughout this whole process, applicant or applicants would never be left guessing and then be left at the end of the day with signatures that actually don't pertain to their application. And then logistics post petition. So this is the main reason, one of the main reasons that we continued this on from October fourth is that. Um, staff felt that we needed to go back in and do um, some revisions on the language as far as what's going to happen logistically and administratively or legislatively, once a petition is has been filled out and signed. And so this is now become a special use permit application process. It's an administrative process. And like before with the immediate properties language, I can go more into that. Once we get to that amendment to discuss. Um, minimum lot sizes, the Housing Committee discussed an idea of having ADOs allowed on residential zoned properties with a minimum of eight thousand square feet lots. Um, that was a discussion. Um, I, looking back at notes and then what I recall of that conversation, there wasn't a firm conclusion about going forward with that amendment. Um, we did have some input on thoughts from planning, um, planning staff, but we didn't have anything specific as far as a motion or any, um, direction to staff to draft amendment related to minimum lot sizes. So. Now that I've gone over those six, does anybody have any follow up questions? I kind of went over briefly all of those six topics.
I have some.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, um, in the draft that I saw, and I know there were updates sent more recently, but there wasn't a minimum lot size included, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then on the logistics post petition, a special use permit application.
Yes.
That's different from a conditional use permit.
Correct.
What I am not familiar with special use permits is like, I just don't know what that is. In my time on the council or the Planning Commission, uh, does it run with the land or how, what, how is that applied?
Um, I'm gonna ask our legal scholar, Brian Jones, to kind of explain specialist permit to make sure that it is said correctly the first time. So there's not confusion.
Okay.
And, and Brandon's here as well and may want to weigh in if, if, yeah. He has other comments, but, uh, the idea here is that this is a, this is a a permit that allows them to do something that's outside of, uh, the norm if they don't have the permit. There are conditions upon it in this particular case, such as maintaining a rental dwelling license. Um, meeting all of the code, uh, provisions regarding internal ADUs. Um, and other, uh, uh, filling out an application which includes a, a promise to abide by the parking and owner occupancy requirements and some things like that. So it's a permit that once they have, it would continue to be valid on the property, uh, as long as the conditions are met.
Even if the property changes ownership, it still runs with the land?
Uh, yes, it should, although, um, it occurs to me that maybe I want, want Brandon to weigh in on that because we have this, uh, that's how they, they often work in the past, but given that we want them to sign the promise that they're going to abide by the regulations, we might want it to lapse with ownership.
Yeah, that's a, a good question. I, I had the same question. I noticed in the current language, it, it doesn't, it specifically does not say anything about, i- in number three, in subsection three, forty subsection three, it talks about the applicant signing, uh, an acknowledgement, acknowledging that they've that, that they'll keep the unit, the, uh, the ADO owner, uh, there'll be an owner occupied unit on the property and they'll comply with the parking standards typically. Like with, I'm thinking of like the second kitchen agreements that we make them, th- those are recorded, but it's specifically required in the ordinance that they do record them. And in this current draft, there's nothing that would require recording. So it, it looks like in this case, it'd be something that we would just keep on file in our office. And, uh, it, it, it would just, uh, yeah, it, it wouldn't be something you could pull up with title search, but it, it, it would be. It, uh, I, I don't see a mechanism by which it, it would actually go away with a new owner.
Yeah, I, as I think about it more, uh, that gave me a chance to think about it more. The way the ordinance is written, it's, it's a, it's a mandatory, uh, act to issue the permit if the conditions are met. So it's not a discretionary act. If you meet the conditions and the criteria that are in the code, then you're entitled to the permit. One of the conditions is that you maintain a rental dwelling license, which the new owner would have to come get the new rental dwelling license. So I think what we would do is when they come for the new rental dwelling license, we would also have them sign the acknowledgement that is also one of the conditions for the permit. But as long as they did those two steps, they would, the new owner would be entitled to the permit.
Yeah, that's right.
And then on the parking, um, allocation or the parking requirements. Excuse me, remind me what the requirements are for a legal duplex for parking?
The requirements for what?
A legal duplex for parking.
Like what makes it an illegal duplex?
No, if a duplex is legal, then it's required to have X amount of parking. How many stalls is that? Do we know?
Brandon's checking with Scott.
Okay.
That's a code intricacy that I don't.
Yeah, and I just wanted to compare what a legal duplex and a legal ADO require for parking.
The the ADU, um, if you look in the code in fourteen, in fourteen, uh, thirty, uh, I think it's subs, or section thirty, it talks about needing at least four parking spaces and then one for each additional car kept on the property. Um, in the one family and two family residences. So it'd be four parking spaces. It'd be similar to, uh, or it'd be three parking spaces. Um, the greater of three parking spaces per unit, uh, yeah, it'd be three parking spaces for duplex. But when you have an ADU, you have to have at least four.
So if there's a duplex, you only need three parking stalls for two units. Is that right?
That's, that's correct. One and two family residential, the greater of three spaces per unit or recreational vehicle owned or operated. Yeah, so it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's three spaces for.
Three spaces per unit? Or three spaces per duplex? Like, there's a difference.
Three spaces per unit.
So those, at a legal duplex, you're required to have six stalls. Is that correct? Okay. That was my question.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly right.
Simple math. Thanks, guys.
Other questions? We have sixty minutes for this item, so I, and I, I would prefer we get all out now so that tonight we don't have to be here.
I have a question.
So can, can somebody from planning help us with the cost of an RDL and the cost of a special use permit? Just, just to put those out there, what we, what are we, what does it cost people?
Special use permit, um, I, I don't think that's currently in the fee schedule.
It isn't. We were.
One of the things, if you were to approve this amendment, you'd, you'd then need to act, we'd actually need to bring you a consolidated fee schedule. Um, amendment to add actually two things. You'd need to add a fee for this particular special use permit. And then if you, one of the things that, uh, I'm not sure if Malia mentioned this, but the current draft actually allows individuals to come in and get a permit for their property. It also allows groups of properties that think they all want it together to ask for a text amendment to chapter fourteen point thirty to get themselves added to the permitted list. And it provides that they do that by following essentially the same process for a rezoner for text amendment, but it specifically says that they get charged a different fee per the consolidated fee schedule, because it was our understanding that the committee would, would want a lower fee for that. But both of those fees would need to come back to you with a consolidated fee schedule amendment in the next few weeks.
The, the committee talks about that fee being three hundred dollars.
Annually? Or?
For the application.
Oh, a one-time fee for special.
And then, yeah, and then you have your fee for your RDL that you have to maintain, which is an annual fee, but your application fee, the one time is three hundred.
For the one house, not like the group rate?
That would be a separate fee schedule and we haven't discussed the group.
Yeah, the group rate, we haven't figured out.
Okay.
RDLs are twenty dollars per unit and then sixty dollars, uh, it, it goes up to sixty beyond the one unit, so.
What, what do we anticipate from planning? If somebody comes in with an application, it's all completed, and I know this is hard to just estimate, but what, what should a citizen expect as far as timeframe from the time they come with a completed app, pay their fee, have the RDL, you know, with it? Is somebody gonna have to come out and inspect, you know, do a site visit or something like that for that RDL? So is there, what, what kind of timeframe and what should people expect?
So as far as, uh, the application process, if it's an administrative application, we're gonna process that, process that in ten working days. That's what we do with all of our other applications. Scott, would there be any RDL, um, inspections with the RDL that might lengthen that out?
Yeah, and then just our standard process that we do currently with any ADU or rental dwelling licenses. We go out and do a quick inspection to make sure it meets all the criteria of fourteen thirty, meaning it meets all the parking requirements. It has, um, you know, everything else that is required and, um, minimum health and safety standards are met. And so, um, that's usually done within a week or two. They're, they're generally contacted within a, a week of getting the application made, um, provided the application is complete. Um, and so they're contacted within a week to say, hey, we've got your application. We need to schedule an inspection. When can you do it? And so, um, as long as any corrections that are needed are done quickly, the process can be completed fairly quickly.
Thank you, Scott. Malia, can you speak to, uh, you had mentioned the sixty-six percent of pathways and maybe you were gonna go into more detail and examples on that, but we were talking about as a committee, whether or not the applicant themselves count as part of that sixty-six. um, we were talking about as a committee whether or not the applicant themselves count as part of that sixty-six percent. Can you clarify that part as well?
Yeah, so the applicant, I'll go to the language for the third amendment. Okay, um, I'm trying, I don't know where exactly in this, but yes, the applicant vote does count as part of the sixty-six percent. So it's the name. Okay, so in two C, it's the name, address and signature of owners of at least sixty-six percent of the properties described in subsection two A. Um,
Should that be subsection two B?
Yep, two B, which a list of addresses is the property for which the permit is being applied for and then the immediate residential properties. So that it is included.
Counselor Ellsworth?
One thing to think about with this fee structure, uh, that Dave Shipley brought up is I had a call this morning and multiple emails have come in about, um, a whole neighborhood that is largely in favor of this. And I'm just wondering hypothetically if the fee was three hundred dollars for the neighborhood. Is there, how is that distributed and who's gonna pay for that? I guess I'm a little uncomfortable asking all those applicants, you figure it out, like you Venmo somebody, you know, so maybe there's a different way to structure that fee structure so that it is fair and we're not asking a one person, like a neighborhood chair, just to pony up and put all that money in, um, cause it certainly has a mutual benefit. So that's one thought I had. And then, um, another citizen asked me about, uh, legal duplexes. They have a legal duplex and they'd like to add an ADU. Is that allowed in our current code? Is that allowed in this proposal? Where does that fall?
Okay, so, um, currently, um, duplexes currently are code and I, and I don't believe this, this proposal either allows for, uh, a duplex to have an ADU. Um, fourteen, fourteen thirty specifically confines it to single family detached homes. Um, another zone that does that is the RC zone. It specifically excludes anything but a single family detached home from having an ADU. Um, as far as the fee structure, um, we, we could have, uh, like a, can, a, um, concept plan has a base fee and then a, a fee, uh, per lot. So we could have a small base fee and then, uh, twenty-five doll- I, I think conditional use or um, conceptual plan is twenty-five dollars per additional lot. So we could do something like that. That's an example of, uh, uh, of a, of, of how a, uh, another type of application is structured to, uh, to consider additional lots, so.
Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, regarding the fee, we had talked about that in the meeting. Um, and there are other instances where groups apply for something that would benefit the group, but it's just one fee.
Yeah, and that's kinda what I, I agree with that idea.
So in that case, they, they would have one primary applicant for the whole cluster that's attempting to do it. And then, yeah, it would be up to them to figure out if they wanted to share those fees, how they would do it. It's entirely possible that some people would sign onto this and want to have this, um, use allowed to them, but not have immediate plans to put in an ADU. And so they wouldn't have any plans to get immediate financial benefit or to invest additional funds into creating an ADU on their property. But, um, having that possibility is a useful thing and a valuable thing for them. And so that could be reason for them to go ahead and sign on.
Could I ask, uh, Scott a question about zoning enforcement? Um, just your general take on enforceability of what we're proposing and, uh, your level of confidence that the city um, will be able to, um, uh, assume that we'll have conformity with the law? Uh, the, what, what level of confidence do you think you have about that and how, how hard or difficult will this be to enforce?
So, I mean, we've, we've been fairly straightforward, um, for a long time, that these types of things can be difficult to enforce. Um, we're, we're willing to admit that. Um, they're not impossible to enforce. We do it on a regular basis. Um, the things that have been proposed here, um, the only potential concern that I would have with enforcement is having, um, areas where technically the zone doesn't allow for it, but then little, you know, for lack of better terms, spot zones where these little properties are peppered throughout these zones that do allow for it, as long as we have the paperwork in our system that show that that's been processed and it's legal for that current owner. Um, I, I don't have any concerns with, um, with doing that or with being able to enforce on that. Um, and so hopefully, um, we can ma- make sure that our system is maintained with accurate records, which, um, I think we're getting better and better at doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Whipple and then Counselor Fillmore.
All right, if you just stay up here a quick. So, um, I noticed in fourteen thirty, it talks about, um, non-compliance with the standards of the section shall be just cause for denial or revocation of a rental dwelling license. Um, how often have you had to revoke a rental dwelling license for something, say, for you've discovered that they're not providing adequate off-street parking or, or something like that, you know?
Um, revocation of a license, um, if I remember correctly, there is a process in the code that the city would have to go through before we revoke the license. Um, and so my experience in enforcing on properties that are not compliant is just our standard enforcement of going after them through the criminal prosecution process and properties come into compliance, uh, through my experience in that process. Whether it's because they decide to stop doing what they were doing that was illegal or sell the property and just wash their hands of the whole thing.
So once a non-compliant property has come to your attention and you begin your enforcement, the end result is compliance one way or another.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Fillmore?
Oops, thank you. Uh, Scott, you're off the hook.
Okay.
I'm gonna focus with Bran- Brandon and, uh, Malia, if I might, okay? Um, and both the housing committee has been focused primarily on addressing the affordable housing crisis, unquote. Uh, but I, I continue to have some anxiety that we're expanding this too much too soon. Uh, Provo is, certainly has its share of rental properties. And when we do surveys, the number one priority comes back saying we should have more single-family lots, right, and homes. Uh, the mail I get is now five, six to one against major expansion of ADUs. People are concerned that it, uh, could alter their neighborhoods. It's gonna end up being a de facto rezone of the neighborhood that they bought into, right? And many cases put their life savings in that. And so I look at the parameters that the committee is proposing and, and I have some questions. First of all, it seems to me that eight thousand ought to be the minimum lot. Secondly, on the west side, I'm, I'm a little anxious and so are some of our neighborhood shares that we've singled out the west side for our, the massive experiment, to see just how this is gonna work and how we have some reassurances, uh, from various parties. We've seen in, uh, memos over the past few weeks that, you know, this really isn't gonna be a, a gold rush type of hit, that it's gonna be fairly limited, based on experiences elsewhere, but we really don't know. I mean, we're guessing about Provo. And Provo is a unique magnet for people who wanna live here. And so it just seems to me that we ought to be going at a more incremental way. With respect to the west side, I think we got an assurance a couple of weeks ago in our meeting. I can't remember, uh, Brandon, whether it was you or Brian perhaps, that, uh, if we saw this was accelerating too fast, for example, on the west side, that we can always change, right? We could, we could impose a moratorium or we could impose more limits. Is that still your thinking?
I think so. Uh, even today with, with Bill, I've been talking with Bill Pepperoni. I think that's still our idea that there is a, there's always the possibility or always the, the option to come back into, to this group and and consider some, some changes to the legislation. Um, yeah, it, it is an ambitious thing that we're proposing. I, I think it's helpful. I would note, uh, uh, you highlighted the fact that our, our survey that we did earlier this year for the general plan, uh, you know, it, it, it definitely shows that there's a big desire by our citizens to have additional single-family homes. One of the, the top five, I think it was like the fourth, uh, fourth housing type that was desired was ADUs. There was a good percentage, around twenty-five percent of the, the citizens, uh, uh, really showed a desire for ADUs in comparison to thirty-nine percent for single-family homes, so.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we've talked about, but it's not part of this ordinance, is lowering the, the minimum age for a senior citizen to bring someone into their home. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I think there's more and good reasons for doing that, lowering it maybe to sixty and see.
Thirty-three?
Your, your definition of senior citizen is probably a little different than mine, Shannon. But it seems to me that, uh, that's something that we ought to consider, uh, again incrementally, not just dropping it to fifty or something like that. Is that something that the housing committee is considering and going to be proposing?
Yeah, that's actually something in our meeting last week, we actually discussed that. And that's something the planning commission also brought up in their discussions of these proposed amendments, is taking a look at that age limit. Um, that's not amendment, an amendment we can propose here on this proposal. That would have to go back to planning commission, but that is something that's on the radar for the housing committee.
Okay, so it's not something we should simply propose that the council has to go through, planning commi- commission?
Yeah, because, yes, yes. Cause it would be separate from these that were, um, reviewed by them.
Okay. Let me last raise my primary concern. Uh, when the initial discussion started on ADUs, the idea was that there'd be different avenues that you could pursue, one of which was neighborhood approval. And that would be anywhere in the city, right?
Yes.
Um, and my sense was that we were talking about neighborhood approval. And if a neighborhood thought this would be worth doing, then if we had two-thirds of the citizens approve it, that, uh, we'd go ahead and we'd, we'd, we'd throw that out to the neighborhoods and leave it up to them. Because that's one of the things that we get in trouble with in the past, right? Is that we impose things on neighborhoods, uh, thinking we know what's best for them. And so I was okay with that. But the language we have now simply asks us to get the approval of two-thirds of the people who have immediately adjacent uh, residential structures. I, I just don't understand why we are so constrictive all of a sudden on that approach. Why not have a larger radius? Because ADUs don't affect just the person next door to you. They affect your, your entire neighborhood, people down the street. And if they don't want it, they ought to have a say. So why did we end up with such a small radius, if you will, for that approval process?
Yeah, that's a good question, Bill. And housing committee members can jump in at any time here. Um, so originally, yes, the first time we came to a work meeting, we had those three, talked about the three different pathways, which was the individual property, the street, and then the neighborhood. Um, going through planning and discussing with how we would enforce that and the logistics of how that would even, that would all happen. Um, we found it to be easier and the housing committee agreed that it was easier to go down to kind of a single pathway approach, which is now what you have in your third amendment, which is where you ask immediate properties. Um, but we expanded that, so it wasn't just a single property applying for um, an ADU permit, but instead you can have groups of properties that are together. And yes, though, that does exclude, um, the input from those further down the street or a couple of blocks away or within a whole neighborhood. Um, previously, that was part of our code last year as part of the S overlay, I believe it was the S overlay or the AOS. Yeah, part of the overlay zone, a neighborhood could apply for, to be part of an overlay zone. Um, and it was through this, um, petitioning and signature process. Um, that was actually, um, amended out of fourteen thirty last year by the council. And so we're trying to find a middle ground between that approach and then also this approach to take it incrementally, um, and allow for the committee, they see a need to expand this mixed-use housing type, but they also want the ability of neighbors to still have an input in this. But yes, it is not as expansive as input as it is with a whole neighborhood.
Well, here's the problem, right? If you have a small radius, just immediately adjacent properties, those are the neighbors who are most closely affected, uh, by the social relationship with you. So family, there are people who are gonna be much less inclined. It may well be that they don't want an ADU at your house. But they live next door to you, right?
Yes.
And they wanna keep the peace. They're your friends. They go to church with you. Their kids play with you. They, they don't want to be your enemy on this request. And so they get cowed into it to some extent. And it totally leaves out the people down the street, as I say, who are also impacted if you start multiplying ADUs. And it doesn't give them a say. And I think that's wrong. I know there are people in town, people in the city, on the council, who want to just open up ADUs of the whole city. Cause they think that's, that's great. But the, the unintended consequences of such opening that floodgate is something troubles me a lot. And that's why I keep coming back to this idea of doing it incrementally, see how it works, see what's going on in other cities. And I think this is the fatal flaw in the plan. I, I will vote against it. That, that you simply allow immediately adjacent property owners to say, sure, Bob, if you wanna do that, I'll swallow hard, go ahead and give it a shot. I, I just think it needs to be a much larger radius. And I, I suppose that that probably was the matter of some discussion. Well, how do we carve out that ra- radius? What is it sign? And I don't know whether there's a logical line to draw. It ends up being arbitrary no matter what. But I think our citizens, particularly in established neighborhoods, feel like they deserve to have a say. And, and I, I'm, Lee, I'm talking to you, you're the source of my problem. You're behind the mic, right? And so, you know, I really speak to the housing committee. I just think that they're taking this issue out of the hands of a larger neighborhood and that's not gonna be well received. And so I, I would urge the housing committee to readdress that, to taking into consideration a much larger radius in terms of this pathway to an ADU.
Um, Counselor McKay has her hand up.
Hey, um, this partly addresses Bill's concern and I've heard from multiple residents that they're concerned about neighbors, the awkwardness, right, of creating division and we, in the neighborhood, and we don't want it, we don't want that. Um, one constituent proposed an idea which I think sounds really smart. Um, I'm, I'm okay with how we have it set up as far as the more simplified adjacent properties. But, um, her, this person's idea was that, um, was that, so if someone goes in to development services and they want to start this process, with starting the process, development services will, will let them know who the neighboring properties are that they need to speak to. And there could be an online portal where the person who wants it can notify the neighbor and it could be done anonymously through a portal on a computer where they provide the information they need to provide, with a yes or no answer as to whether they'd like to have their, that house become an ADU. And I did really like that idea. I think it takes a lot of the stress off the neighborhood relationships. And, and I think it was streamlined in a lot of ways also, where the individual, the property owner gets their, all their information that development services needs onto some online form. And I just thought that was a really slick way to do it and to help relieve any possible division or awkwardness within a neighborhood. Cause we definitely don't wanna start breaking neighborhoods up or causing, you know, issues between homes and homeowners.
Counselor McKay, could I follow up maybe with a question for the staff then? I mean, it, that, that sounds to me like an administrative decision. I mean, that, that sounds to me like an administrative decision that could be made. It's not necessarily something we have to write into code. Although I like that idea very much. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, typically. When we notice people, it's, it's typically done. To be fair and not, not get into being arbitrary in our actions, we, we typically like it to be, you know, codified. We really like our actions to be uh, codified, codified in the, in the ordinance. So, but, but that's, it is something we can do. There, there, there. Yeah, we, we, that if, I, I'd probably feel more comfortable if it was something in, in an ordinance, but, uh, but we, we can definitely, uh, reach out. Uh, we, there, there could be a system where people are, are, are notified. I,
I think it just makes more sense to make sure that no one's getting harassed. Well, you haven't answered yet. Maybe the person's awkward. They don't want to answer yet. And, and if they don't answer, they don't answer. You know, they're not forced to answer. But keeping it more anonymous where it's not up to the neighbor to keep knocking on their door and harassing, so to speak, someone. Either way, seems just a lot. We just want to keep, I just, I just want, I don't, still want anything to create division. You know, we just don't need that.
One thing I was thinking of while I was, uh, listening to Councilor Fillmore and, and his question of why we didn't, you know, require such a, why we're proposing a, a smaller, you know, sphere of, of, of people to be contacted. I think part, again, one of the concerns was we want to make this attainable for people. And I, I think if we start reaching out to all these, these people, you know, you know, I, I thought of like, okay, so when we notice, we're, we're talking like, you know, we noticed 500 feet in every direction that, um, if we took that kind of approach, all of a sudden we're, we're put a big burden on people to try to go contact, uh, a lot of, you know, just a, a high number of people. But then we could take the approach that you just talked about noticing, uh, everybody, but then that's, uh, have to think through that a little bit more. I, we, I, I think we wanted an administrative process. So I guess if we're comfortable with, uh, just uh, uh, again, with this is a check the boxes approval. So if we're okay with just, if, if we notify everybody, what, what would be? Again, an administrative process is one where it's like the, it, it's like if you check all the boxes, you get approved. It, it's, the, the neighbors don't get to come in so much and say, hey, you're, we don't like this. And so I'm worried that that kind of approach of notifying everybody sounds kind of more synonymous with like a rezone application. That's why I kind of like the way we've got it set up now because they, the applicant's already gone through. He's kind of gone to a limited number of people, done some, uh, kind of bridge building with his neighbors. And, and it's, it's straightforward. It's, it's limited and it's clean.
Brandon, I think we keep the numbers as you have them set up. Like I think, in my opinion, it would still stay with just the adjacent neighbors. But just the system more, so people aren't made to harass each other for signatures.
Okay, okay, I see. I, I think that's doable and I, I don't, I don't see anything that, uh, yeah, I think that's, that's doable.
Let me just suggest that if you go to an anonymous approach, uh, that doesn't end the harassment. That same person is going to knock on doors and say, are you the one that voted against me?
Yeah, I, I was going to make that, I, I mean, it's kind of like when you ask, when you're applying for grad school and you ask somebody for, uh, letters of recommendation, right? And then, and then you go around and harass them for the next month about whether they actually sent them in or, in or not. I mean, I, I think that even if we implement that, if somebody gets denied, I think it's very likely, or if they get told, we haven't received responses yet. I think it's very likely that they go around and knock on all the doors to ask, have you responded yet? And did you say yes? Because I want you to help me.
Which is another reason for a larger.
Councilor McKay still has her hand up. It's important to speak. Go ahead, Councilor McKay.
Sorry, guys. I think I said what I want to say. I think that we're going to have problems either way, right? With people who feel pushed to, to, to give yeses and people who want yeses and I mean, we have to, it's like, they just have to kind of follow the democratic process. And if they get the majority, they get it. And if they don't, they don't. And people are going to have to be okay with that. It'd be respectful process.
Okay, Councilor Fillmore.
Well, that's my point. The democratic process would suggest a larger radius of people. Because more people are going to be affected than just the immediately adjacent people. Also, if you have a larger radius and if we did some kind of electronic notice through the city, whatever that radius might be, whether it's 500 feet or a thousand or whatever, uh, you, you give that electronic notice, the, the, if, if it gets disapproved in that process, then that one ADU applicant is going to be much less likely to knock on a hundred doors than he is on four or five. But it minimizes the potential for harassment.
Councilor Shipley? Sorry, just, just to, I, so first of all, from the committee's perspective, we, when we had the three paths to start, but we, that one of the paths was always the adjacent neighbors. So we've always been looking at this same path. And then we just consolidated to try to simplify code and make it easy for citizens to do. I, I think unfortunately, uh, some of these conversations feel like no matter what we look at, it's going to be a proxy for whether or not people want more ADUs or want less ADUs. And that's it. So no matter what the policies are that we're looking at, we're going to use them as a proxy for whether or not we think there should be expansion or not. And, and so one of the things from my perspective is, is like, look, if the, if the committee and the council is, is committed to continue to watch this process play out and committed to tweak the process if necessary and committed to stop something if it gets out of control, uh, the moment that it gets out of control and adjust, I, I think that's all we can commit at this point. And, and the folks who will vote to try to expand ADUs in some way will still vote to try to expand ADUs in some way. And the folks who don't want expansion of ADUs will still vote against it. And so I, I guess my, my, my commitment from, as a committee member is we realize there are concerns. Anybody who doesn't want expansion of ADUs is going to have concerns with any ordinance that we put in front of the, the council. And my commitment for me personally is just that we will be watching this very closely and continue to discuss it and try to tweak and try to make it better. Um, but the generals, the, the general idea is yes, we're trying to make it attainable, you know, for, for a citizen to say, look, I, I have the parking. I, I, you know, the, the, and, and you might say, well, neighborhood needs more input. And what I would say to that is, is that um, the neighbors are, are worried about illegal duplexes. They're worried about over parking. They're worried about over occupancy. And so if you're forcing that individual to say, look, if, if you'll support me, I, I'm committed. I have to go to the city and through staff to get a, a license. I, I, I'm not going to do this illegally. I'm going to do this in a legal way. Then they're going to have those things that are, that our citizens are most concerned about, which is the stuff that happens when it's an illegal, uh, uh, duplex, not a legal ADU.
Councilor Whipple.
All right. Um, I also will be speaking as a Housing Committee member and responding to many of the issues raised by Councilor Fillmore. Um, the first, one of the problems with the idea of having the full neighborhood approval is that neighborhoods can be very large. My neighborhood stretches, you know, about a mile from end to end. And honestly, it doesn't make sense for a property at one end of that neighborhood to have to solicit the approval of the residents who live a mile away from them, who will feel no direct effects of that property's ADU. It does make sense for the adjacent neighbors who will get a new neighbor if an ADU is allowed. Um, those are the ones, we've talked about how they have a potential social effect, but those are the only ones who would see if there are extra cars on the street. And honestly, this gives a really fantastic notification process because those immediate neighbors would know that they've applied for an ADU, that there are certain parking requirements. And that if they see that there are problems with off-street parking, they're on notice to tell the city to enforce on it. So we have created this really good mechanism for accountability and for building these neighborhood bonds. The next thing that I wanted to address is the fact that this is incremental. Um, I am one of those counselors that Mr. Fillmore alluded to, who would like to expand ADUs for single family homes throughout the city. I think that would be consistent with the state intent. And I think it would allow the ones that are currently existing underground, non-compliant throughout the city to be brought into compliance. And I think that would be a good thing. I realize that there's not support for that, which is why we're doing this as an incremental process. As of now, ADUs are already allowed in 10 distinct areas within the city. And I am the counselor who lives in a neighborhood that has ADUs. I have the firsthand experience here with these as my neighbors, both the people who own the homes and the people who are renting these units. It has not destroyed my neighborhood. It's been really good. And this gives families flexibilities in how they use their property and how they're able to manage their, their budget, which is an incredible asset. The next thing I want to say is that allowing ADUs does not decrease the number of single family homes or the single family housing stock within our community. What it allows is for property owners who have a single family detached home and who have gone through this process or live in one of the areas to choose to use their property for an ADU. They don't have to. It doesn't automatically make this into an ADU. And because of there's this greater flexibility, I think we can decrease the number of rental only properties and potentially increase the number of homeowner occupied properties. Because if a house is too expensive for a family to buy, it will be bought by an investor and rented out. It'll be either rented out to, well, some definition of family under city code, right? A nuclear family, grandmother, kids, multi-generational, or are three unrelated singles. It will be rented out. And that decreases the stability in the neighborhood. But if you can have this flexibility, it becomes more affordable for homeowner residents to get into that house. And I know I've said this before, but I'll say it again. I have neighbors who bought their homes with an ADU. And while their children were small and their family was small, they rented the ADU so that they could afford to make those payments. As their kids got bigger, as they advanced in their careers and their income grew and stabilized, they stopped renting the ADU. They let their bigger kids move into that basement area. And then on the other end, after kids grow up and the family um, is in an empty nester phase, they're easily able to move back into the ADU. And they've got the flexibility. If a kid needs to come home from college, um, you know, married kids have to come back. They have the space and the facility already in their home to accommodate them. So it's not a, once we have added an accessory dwelling unit to a single family home, that it's always going to be used in that way. I like the idea that we give property owners the ability to choose how to use their property. The last thing that I wanted to add is that, um, we are looking for, uh, a report in six months. And we can assess how this is going, where we've seen applications. And I particularly am interested in if the staff is able to assess from the applications whether these are our houses that already had a second kitchen and everything built into it, that they're just going ahead and applying and becoming compliant, or they just hadn't been using that. Or if we're getting applications for, um, kind of renovation, where they're going to have to do new construction, add a kitchen, things like that. Um, I suspect that we will have more of the first category where people are going to take advantage of the ability to use their house with, you know, it's different rooms and, and kitchen that it already has. And if that's the case, then I believe that the impact on the neighborhoods would be minimal because the likelihood is that these are already fully occupied. Right? You know, they're, we're either illegally renting it out to somebody and that none of their neighbors have chosen to, to rat them out because neighbors don't want to do that. And now they'll have a path where they can say, yeah, we can do that. And we can finally acknowledge this great couple that's living in the basement. Yes, we know that they're not in danger of eviction if the city ever finds out about this. I see that as a good thing that stabilizes our neighborhood.
Uh, might I add just one quick thing? Cause you, you, you mentioned something that kind of struck a, a thought in my mind. Uh, in speaking with Bill Pepperoni this morning, we, staff is, is definitely uh, willing to, to bring a report like you just mentioned, uh, to, to help you assess this after we've gone down the road of ways to, to evaluate how, how this ordinance is working. So that's, that's definitely something on our, on our radar. So.
I'd like to make a few comments if I could. Um, first a question. Bill alluded to other cities and I know we've looked at stat, uh, statistics in other cities. Actually, we've looked a fair number of times at them and I'm not remembering off the top of my head. Um, but I, I do recognize that Logan, uh, Ogden, Orem, other college, uh, towns have quite a bit more ADUs than we do, or at least allow them. My question is, um, I seem to recall seeing statistics about how widely they're used when they are allowed. And I never saw anything that suggested any sort of avalanche of numbers. In fact, it was quite modest almost everywhere we looked. And so I'm wondering if we, uh, if, if I'm remembering that correctly.
So speaking to other towns, I don't have specific data on how often they are used when they are allowed. I can look that up during the break. That should be fairly easy to find. Um, I do have data and I can send this out to the council during the break as well, just for review on other towns and college towns included throughout Utah. Um, Logan actually is very, very similar to us. They meet the 33% requirement exactly. So they're right at the 33% that's required for college towns. Um, yeah, and all of their ordinances are very similar to us. Um, Cedar City, another college town, they are not at the 33%, but they're right around 50. So 50% of their primarily residential zones. Um, Orem is citywide generally, they have some specifications like single family dwellings, and then they have some zones that's not allowed in. Salt Lake, it's allowed citywide generally, including multifamily and non-primaryly residential use properties. So Salt Lake is the most, um, I guess you would say relaxed on their regulations around ADUs. And then similar sized other cities, the West Valley, they have a geographical boundary. They actually have outlined streets in their city. And then within those certain geographic areas, ADUs are allowed with specifications like it has to be a detached, single family home. Um, West Jordan doesn't really have a lot of, um, regulations for ADUs. They have any multifamily residential units. Um, and then Sandy also allows it in any single family zone. And then they only require an RDL. Um, but they have no parking requirements. So they're also pretty.
I think it would be helpful if you could just find some information about, um, I mean, cause I think we, you know, we make a lot of assumptions on both sides of this issue about, you know, how many people are going to do this? And if it's, if we're inclined to not want them, we imagine it's going to be this, this huge number. And if we're inclined to support them, we imagine it's going to be a pretty modest number. So it would be helpful. Um, I mean, I would point our council to the fact that just sort of echoing what Rachel said, I also live in a neighborhood that has allowed ADUs for a number of years and was the neighborhood that achieved the legal requirement of owner occupancy for them, uh, that really stabilized the neighborhood. And so it's not like we don't have any statistics to look at or we don't, we have no idea what this effect would be. Uh, we, we've got neighborhoods around the city that we can look at. And I can assure you, I've said this multiple times, but there is nothing, you would never characterize my neighborhood as anything but a family neighborhood with single family detached homes. ADUs do not change that status. And we have over 50 homes, uh, who have already signed a petition in the Foothills neighborhood. Uh, Ruth Thomas will probably be coming to our council meeting this evening to speak to this. Um, most of which are families with multiple children. She said the most, the most adamant supporters are families with four or more children. And this is because the housing crisis is upon us and this is no longer a normal housing situation in which we can afford to, uh, uh, do nothing to help younger families get into homes, and they're seeing this as their way in. And that's that's been the pattern that I've seen in my neighborhood, and and I and I think it it behooves us to do something to help them. So I do think that, anyway, I think that would be helpful. My sense is given, given the experience of other cities, given the experience of our neighborhoods, we're not likely, and the fact that we're adding on top of this a requirement for signatures, seems like we're not making it overly easy, nor are we making it overly difficult for people to 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 try to opt into this situation, which for me feels like the sweet spot for an incremental approach. So it is actually an incremental approach that we are considering here as opposed to a citywide adoption. And I think that's what, just echoing what has been said by a number of my colleagues, I think that's what we decided was the compromised way to go about this. And we've been at this discussion now for ten months, because we had that discussion at the end of twenty twenty-one. So I don't, this is, by my definition, nowhere close to a rushed decision. We've had lots of public feedback. We've had lots of deliberation. So I'm ready, I'm ready to support this tonight, and and I'm glad that we've gotten this far, and I think this is a good, a good way to go because of the, what we'll learn from it in the in the coming months. And and, you know, we will make, we will make adjustments as as we see fit. Fillmore?
Hey, George.
I haven't had a chance.
Mister Hoben, yes.
And actually, Catrice also has her hand up again, but I'll.
Well, I just, I I had a few questions. I can make comments tonight, but I wanted to ask.
Yeah, go ahead. But let me also remind everybody that we're getting close to the end here.
Right. That's why I was saying, I just, if I can just get a couple of questions answered, then we can have more of a discussion tonight. No, no, you're fine. It's.
Have a chance.
No, no, you're fine. Malia, can you explain what we have on the screen? This is one thing I I even asked for cul-de-sac examples, so thank you. But I, and and I think it's because I live in kind of like a cul-de-sac, so it's, I'm envisioning like, okay, what would I do in my my home, because we have a basement. But anyways, so explain to me what we got here.
I'm gonna let Brandon explain it, because he made it.
And real quick, Brandon, because we are running out of time.
Okay, you bet. So if you look in in section section forty, special use permit section, it it talks about who needs to, the the people you need to have in your petition. And so you noticed on that map, I highlighted one of the properties in pink. And if you go back to the language, it talks about immedi-, we use the term immediately adjacent property. We just, we we created the definition there. We use terms such as common border, immediately across, same cul-de-sac, and I don't know if you can go back to that. So you you can see where we, you can see the common borders. You can see the.
Okay, so everything, everything with text would need an approval. And in this case, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And to get to sixty-six percent, technically, I think you'd have to get six signatures. So including the home, you'd need five additional signatures out of the.
Exactly.
Out of the the seven.
Yep.
Not easy, probably.
We proposed, as we talked today, Bill and I, we thought that it might be wise to insert a word in there where it says, it talks about, if you go back to that last slide there, you can see a cross, a cross from the home to the north, immediately across, obviously, there's a road in the way. We thought that the language should say immediately across the local road rather than just a, or rather a, we're in a city, so it should use street. So instead of it just saying street, it should say local street. That way, we don't have a situation where somebody across state streets affecting.
Can I see the map again real quick? I think that's a good idea. Also, common border, this one, frankly, maybe we should say common bor- border with with adjacent street front or something like that, because that one, this, let's say this is north, southeast, west, the southeast property. I don't know if that makes sense to have them require a signature, because, I mean, I think about parking, right, is is one of the main concerns we get about duplexes or ADUs or over occupancy or whatever. I don't see, I know Bill, councillor Fillmore feels differently, but anyway, I'm just trying to make it a little simpler. That seems like, why would I need to get their signature? Although it might be easy to get their signature, because it's not going to impact them, so.
Yeah, that was partly included because, one, because if you remember, we had an application about building, this was an external ADU, about building it in the backyard, so.
Okay.
It's just about the backyard and how you'd need additional parking.
Long story short, maybe we don't mess with it right now. Anyway, okay. Could, in the excluded zones like SDP five, could a petition be done? No? And I'm not making, I'm not saying whether I agree with that or not. I'm just asking, so I understand, like, in my head.
Yeah, I don't know why not. I mean, the, it's.
Well, SDP five is excluded, right?
Right, but.
But then could somebody petition within that excluded zone?
Yeah, I mean, it says, a property owner seeking to allow an internal accessory dwelling unit on a parcel in which is otherwise prohibited may seek a special.
All right, so. So there would be a path if somebody was in an SDP five zone, and they had enough street frontage and nobody cared, and they were on the end and whatever. Okay. And and I guess I just want to say, there is one more path. People can always come to the council, right? So, yeah, so there is one more additional path if they have, you know, neighbors that are really concerned for one reason or another. Okay, those are the questions I have. I have comments, but let, tonight, right? Yeah.
And I know we have councillor McKay, councillor Ellsworth, and okay, so let's, can we try to do it in the next seven minutes? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just give my questions, and maybe you want to answer them later, but me, Travis, did you ask a question about if there's like an apartment complex adjacent?
No, I was more so saying it didn't seem like that property on the southeast corner here should be involved, but I don't want to mess with things right now, right? I don't want to be that guy who's like, no, let's make this change last minute.
No, I'm proposing changes. I'm just trying to figure out, because this is literally my street, and if we're using this cul-de-sac as an example. But if that empty lot across the street where it says immediately across, if there were an apartment complex there, you don't have to get signatures, you're exempt?
Yeah.
You just have to get signatures of the property owner.
Okay, but what if the owner of the complex is like an investment group in Arizona?
That's how it's written, just of the property owner.
So maybe we need to think of a better solution, because that's literally my street. Like, my neighbor, five houses down, is next to a row of townhomes and next to a a large apartment complex. So just one thing to think about, and then the other, I think I lost my train of thought. Oh, the other thing is, how do you get ahold of someone who is renting that unit? So my immediate next-door neighbor, to use a personal example, I'd like to get ahold of said owner about a sewer issue, and I don't know, I have no idea how to contact her. I can find her information via the county assessor's website, but I don't have, I don't know if that's her mailing address. I don't know if that's her physical address. I don't know what her phone number is, because it's rented out. And and so it's just, there's a lot of impracticalities there, and I just, I'm hoping there's a path. I I just am not seeing it. Well, it's just, it's, it's really messy. You can see that it's messy on so many levels.
Councillor McKay and then councillor Fillmore.
Um, just a couple of things. As I've been reading all the emails, there seems to be two mis- pieces of misinformation that are out there. Number one, the idea that we aren't, we aren't true right now to the spirit or the letter of the law from the state. I've talked to multiple elected officials at the state, and I, they, that is, they do not express that at all. They say we're completely, they say that we're completely in line with the spirit and the intent of the law. So I think we should, we can say that as an, as an individuals, we feel it is, but that is not the impression I've been given by the state elected officials I've spoken to. Number two is that we are the only city that hasn't gone like hundred percent rentals for ADUs, and that's not true either. Logan has kept it to thirty-three strictly and very strictly, with no intentions of going higher than that. They were one of the cities given exemption. I don't know what Ogden is doing. At another conference I went to, I heard from the Salt Lake council member saying that they've had real problems with too many ADUs downtown and that they have a huge lack of family housing, and they're going to be working on that. So there's, I mean, there's, there's a lot more to it than just saying Provo's the only place that hasn't done a hundred percent ADUs, because that's just far from the truth. I just think it's important that we're genuine in our communication with everything. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, councillor Fillmore.
Thank you, Chair Hadley. First, I I want to, I want to thank the committee. I know this has been a hard effort, and thank the staff. We've been at this a long time. It's not an easy issue to deal with. I want to thank my colleagues, particularly councillor Whipple for her thoughtful comments. I've grown used to getting very thoughtful, nuanced comments from Rachel, and I appreciate the fact that this is a complicated issue. There are lots of pros and there are some cons as well. I'm not mindful of that. I'm concerned about, sometimes you get this progressive notion, we ought to just throw open ADUs and run with it and see how it goes, and and anybody who's opposed to that is a knee-jerk NIMBYist, right? And I don't think that's the fact, that's the truth. The reality is, we, I get adverse comments to expanding ADUs from some of our most thoughtful citizens. You know, people I respect for their views, and I just just ignorantly reacting to something. They've they've read the ordinance, and they have questions about it. My understanding is that we are presently in compliance with the state statute. Is that right? Correct. For not being compelled to do anything, this is something we are voting on in in our discretion. My concern remains that all we're asking for is immediately adjacent property owners. Yeah, go ahead. And we'll keep the peace across the fence, right? Somebody who's just two doors down, just two doors away, maybe a hundred feet, may have a real concern, but he or she won't have a voice in this. I think that's wrong. I think the repercussions of this go far beyond the this, the people are immediately next door to me, and that's, that's a concern. Second thing is that our our zoning enforcement is, I mean, this ordinance is not self-enforcing, right? Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a complaint-based compliance system, right? We wait, we wait to receive complaints. We're not sending people out knocking on doors and inquiring.
Right, right. The the best way to enforce this would be on a complaint basis.
Yeah, so, well, efficiency sake, right?
Yeah, I don't know the best way, but that's, that's.
More efficient, and so we, I think there's a general acknowledgement that we have hundreds of illegal ADUs in the city right now. And we don't necessarily know where they are, you know, or some of them are, but we don't pursue that to respect our own zoning ordinances unless we get a complaint. So to to use councillor Whipple's phrase, you have to have a neighbor who's willing to rat out his or a neighbor. Okay, that isn't necessarily the ideal compliance scheme if we believe in the laws we pass, right? And so you're talking about doing reports every six months. I don't know how much of an administrative burden that is, but I'm wondering, when you do those reports, are you just going to talk about new ADUs? Or are you going to talk about rational guesstimate as to illegal ADUs? Are you going to be talking about the nature of the occupants? You know, is it, is it a married couple's children in the basement? Is it a married couple with children? Is it college students? I mean, how how discerning is that report going to be?
I believe they do zoning enforcement reports every month. The six-month report would just be specific to if we did pass the amendments proposed tonight. The six-month report would just be specific to this, specific ordinance. But I do believe that they do monthly enforcement reports.
I'm not thinking about enforcement, I'm talking about the six-month reports you're talking about presumably would be on what's happening under this ordinance, new ADU applications. And so I'm asking how, how fine-tuned will that be? I mean, how much information are we going to get other than we had twenty-two applicants?
Right. Well, we're we're going to have, we've we've been actually making some adjustments to our city view application system to differentiate differentiate between detached and attached, so I know we're going to be able to provide that type of information. City View is a pretty broad system with a lot of capabilities to provide a lot of good data, so we will be providing the detached, attached. I don't know that we'll be able to start giving you ideas of of family, you know, the composition of, you know, people living there, but we we will certainly be able to give you the number of ADUs, number of detached, where they're located. We can even tell you, I guess, give you an idea of the the neighbors that that were opposed or 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 that are approved, that are approved and so forth. Any any data that that we get through this application process, we can, we can make that available, and if we, when we come and present that information, if if you desire additional information, we'll seek it out, so we'll we'll do our best to to get the data. Again, we're we're just getting this code written, so there's going to be some work on our end administratively to to be able to get this program running. I think we're in pretty good shape, but it it might, we we may come to you, and you may want some additional information. We'll be willing to come back with that.
Well, for example, it might be helpful to know how many additional cars are now at that location, right? The other thing I was going to suggest, the council just to gestate on a little bit, maybe take the committee, is if you really wanted to be careful that this thing didn't explode, maybe we put a sunset clause on this. We do it for one year, then it sunsets, unless the data a year from now justifies continuing. Just a thought. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks. Shannon had one more quick question, and then we, no? Okay, all right, we're going to take a break. We got to get, we got to get to our food. Okay. So thank you so much, Malia and and Brandon and council. If there's no objection, we'll now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council Work Meeting by unanimous consent.